This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023 in room 137 of the Edison Building. This board acknowledges this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcomed and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535 where the livestream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members, Superintendent Kent Pecow, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Director Workman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of our citizens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin the meeting, I invite those who were elected or re-elected to the Rochester School Board to join me for the ceremonial oath of office, and Board Clerk Don Barlow, will you please administer the oath? New board members, you have your copy of the oath with you.
Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we've created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. You have already signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, and now you will publicly affirm your commitment to that oath. Please repeat after me. Or we can read together. I affirm.
I affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of Independent School District Number 535.
Of Independent School District Number 535.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, and welcome. Let's give them a hand.
2.0 approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move/approval second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, agenda is approved. 3.0 comment to the board. As a reminder, we appreciate that speakers may have strong perspectives and opinions about school district practices, and this is an appropriate venue to share them with the board. Let me remind our stakeholders, however, that our PS school board has influence only over issues that actually, factually exist in this district. We have two speakers this evening. The first one is Jim Rice. Mr. Rice, if you would like to come forward and sit at the table here, speak in either microphone, and you have three minutes for your comments. Welcome. Minnesota statute states that every year in January, school boards must elect officers for a one-year term. The roles of the Rochester Public Schools Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and Treasurer are clear, and all involve additional time, work, and responsibility. Because of this, and in order to make the election process more efficacious, our PS board members have been asked whether they would accept a nomination for any of these offices, and if elected, if they would serve. At this time, we will conduct that election. I will ask three times for nominations, first for board chair. A second for any nomination is not necessary. A roll-call vote will be taken, and a majority of board members will be present. In this case, the number needed is four to win. As soon as the board chair is elected, that person will immediately assume that position and will conduct the remainder of this election and this meeting. And again, I will ask for nominations for each office three times. So it's, if I'm being repetitive, it's not that I forgot that I asked the first time or two. So, to begin, are there any nominations for board chair? Ms. Workman.
I nominate Kathy Nathan.
Kathy Na- Nathan. I have her name before, so it's a hard name to remember, has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for board chair? Any other nominations for board chair? Then, because there is only one nominee for board chair, I move that we accept Kathy Nathan as board chair by acclamation. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Nathan. May God have mercy on your soul. And before I hand over the gavel to Ms. Nathan, I have two messages. First, I've been the board chair for two years. I know for many of you, and for many of us, it felt longer. During that time, I had really come to appreciate the intelligence, the dedication, and the work of this board, this cabinet, and the superintendent. All of you. and the work of this Board, this Cabinet, and the Superintendent. All of you have spent hours and hours of commitment and work to the benefit of our students and staff, and I have a deep respect for the work that you do and will continue to do. I especially thank Kathy Nathan, who has been the Vice Chair for those two long years, and she has brought a kind of organizational brilliance and incredible work commitment. And I'm deeply thankful for all that you've brought. Our Cabinet, our district leadership, our teachers, our support people in the district have gone far and above in making the impossible possible for so many students. It's also been a real honor to be the Chair when we invited Dr. Kent Pecel to become our interim Superintendent, and then to ask him to stay and to have him accept the position as our long-term Superintendent. Working along Kent has for me been educational. It's been inspiring. It's been energizing, and it has convinced me that this district has never been in better hands. There's no question that this district has a lot of work to do. Superintendent Pecel, with the support of the Cabinet and the district, has made difficult decisions, important changes, and proves every day that he is the leader this district needs. Also, he's really good at making videos. Then, on a personal note, as the Chair, I don't have more votes than anyone else. I don't have more authority than anyone else, but it's my honor, and it's been my privilege, to be able to meet with so many stakeholders: with students, with staff, with district leaders, with community leaders, so many different people. And I am so heartened by the majority, the vast majority, of people from every group who absolutely embrace the idea that public education is successful when it works for everyone's children. And I've been especially heartened by our students. The kids we have in our schools today, they are ethical, they are critical thinkers, they are independent learners, and they care about, they accept, and they support each other. They don't judge their friends' success and the success of those who they don't know in their school. That becomes their success. We can learn a lot from listening to our kids, to our students. They really are our future, and I'm very hopeful that our future is going to continue to get brighter. So I thank you for the honor it's been to serve as Board Chair, and my second message is for you, Ms. Nathan, as I hand over the gavel. No matter how the meeting goes, don't throw it.
Jean, before you're able to leave the limelight, if you thought we were going to let you get away without some words about you...
Oh, look at the time.
So Jean Marvin has served us as Board Chair for the past two years, and it was probably one of the most challenging times to be a district leader or an education. But one word I always think about when I think about how Jean has been our leader is grace. We've all seen Jean embody the charm, beauty, and creativity of the three graces of Greek literature as she chaired these meetings. But your leadership has sustained this Board, our district, and our community through other interpretations of that word. Sierra Clark Search, a literacy coach in Detroit, Michigan, was talking about the past few years, and she defined grace as both a noun and a verb, a feeling and an action. It is both the action of giving and the feeling of having been given a chance to succeed, the time to process, the ability to make mistakes without punishment, and forgiveness that looks ahead to improvement. I've seen Jean give grace as she communicated through hours of email exchanges and phone calls to parents and community members frustrated by the challenges of the pandemic or the decisions made by the Board. I've seen Jean give grace to our teachers and staff as she listened to their concerns, asked questions about what they needed to succeed, and advocated for their well-being in our decisions. I've seen Jean give grace to our Superintendent as she guided and supported his transition into his new role both in the district and the community. It was also believed that the three graces of Greek literature endowed artists and poets with the ability to demonstrate exquisite talent. Jean has worked so hard to provide students with the opportunities to demonstrate their own exquisite leadership and advocacy talents through your mentorship of the student School Board. I understand why so many people loved having you as their teacher, because what I've learned from working beside you as Chair was counted to some of the most impactful education and grace and how to be a good human that I've ever had. We wanted to give you a small token of our appreciation for your service as Chair, but we are grateful that you will continue to be our colleague and a leader in this district.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you so much for those kind words, and now we've...
Not so fast. I'm not sure who'd ask for permission, but I'm going to very briefly, really just echo. I think Kathy's use of the term "grace" is perfect. I'm personally indebted to you for the leadership, the friendship, the mentorship that you've provided me, and as I was thinking about the conclusion of your tenure as Chair, of course, I have to have some reference to research or something, I thought of the classic book Leadership is an Art. It's by Max Dupree. He was the CEO of Herman Miller Furniture Company, and the term he ends this entire book with, which I think, Jean, you just embody, is being an elegant leader. And I want to say, he doesn't use this term with any gender reference. I mean, he was the CEO of a furniture company, but he said this of what it means to be an elegant leader. And I would just think about Jean Marvin as I'm hitting these points. It's almost like he knew you. Elegant leaders always reach for completeness. What are some of the marks of elegance? What should leaders be searching for in their efforts to liberate people of high potential? The following ideas are some of the things that one needs to understand to be an elegant leader. Contracts are a small part of relationships. A complete relationship needs a covenant. Intelligence and education can ascertain the facts. Wisdom can discover the truth. The life of an organization needs both. To give one's time doesn't always mean giving one's involvement. Hierarchy and equality are not mutually exclusive. Hierarchy provides connections. Equality makes hierarchy responsive and responsible. Without forgiveness, there can be no real freedom to act within a group. Opportunity must always be connected to accountability. This is not something hopelessly idealistic. Without the promise of accountability, there are no true opportunities and risks. Without true opportunity and risk, there is no chance to seize accountability. It will remain elsewhere. A whale is as unique as a cactus, but don't ask a whale to survive Death Valley. We all have special gifts. Where we use them and how determines whether we actually complete something. Goals and rewards are only parts, different parts, of human activity. When rewards become our goals, we are only pursuing part of our work. Goals are to be pursued. In healthy and relational relationships, rewards complete the process by bringing joy. Joy is an essential ingredient of leadership. Leaders are obligated to provide it. And I think all of us have heard Dr. Marvin talk about bringing the joy back to the work. So you have been an elegant leader, and I joined the Board in saying I'm thrilled that I will continue to have the opportunity to support you as a member of this Board in a different seat on this dais.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. And now, after all those words about elegance and grace, just watch me trip as I walk out there. Madam Chair, the gavel.
Jean, we also have a card for you, but I'm not sure if everybody's signed it yet.
Forget that. Thank you, Julie. We are still on agenda. Item 4.01, election of officers. And the next officer position to be elected is Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair? Dr. Rick Rockman?
I would nominate my colleague Julie Workman.
Julie Workman. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair? Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing no additional nominations, I have a motion to declare Julie Workman Vice Chair of the Rochester Public School Board. Do we have a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Vice Chair Workman. And now we move on to nominations for Clerk. Do we have any nominations? Dr. Garcia?
I nominate my colleague Karen McLaughlin.
Do we have any other nominations for Clerk? Seeing none, Karen McLaughlin as the only nominee for Clerk, I make a motion to declare her the Clerk. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Clerk McLaughlin. And finally, for Treasurer, do we have any nominations? Director Marvin? I nominate Dr. Jessica Garcia. Do we have any other nominations for Treasurer? Do we have any other nominations for Treasurer? Seeing no other nominations, Jessica Garcia has been nominated for Treasurer. I make a motion to accept this nomination. All those in... Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Treasurer Garcia. And thank you, Directors, for making that first agenda item of mine much easier than it could have been.
Objection.
You pull that little card out. The next item on the agenda is 4.02, Board Member Ethics Policy. Yes. Resolution. Oh, yes. Is that... Yes, it is. So close. So close. All right. So we now have a resolution to approve the election of all of the officers. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Kathy Nathan as its Chair for a term of one year effective upon election on January 3, 2023, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Julie Workman as its Vice Chair for a term of one year effective upon election on January 3, 2023, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Karen McLaughlin as its Clerk for a term of one year effective upon election on January 3, 2023, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Jessica Garcia as its Treasurer for a term of one year effective upon election on January 3, 2023. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Now that agenda item is done. So the next agenda item is 4.02, Board Member Ethics Policy. We have a policy 209 where we require the School Board to review this policy once a year, and we've asked each Board Member to review this policy ahead of this meeting, and to comment briefly on a line or two that they think is important to their service as a School Board Member. In addition, if any Board Member does have any recommendations for changes to the language to this policy, the Policy Committee will be doing its formal annual review in February, and it'll come before you to be reapproved as part of the annual review. So would anybody like to start with some comments on the ethics policy?
Sure.
Director Barlow.
I'd like to comment regarding item F of the policy, not in total, but in prior. F deals with fulfilling our legal obligation as being a member of the School Board to comply with all federal, state, and local laws relating to our work as a School Board Member, to comply with all district policies as adopted by the School Board, and then to abide by all rules and regulations as promulgated by the Minnesota Department of Education and other state and federal agencies. The reason these particular things stand out to me is oftentimes individuals who may have a desire to serve on a local school board may think that, or may even feel that we, as a current group of Board Members, operate independent of structure and/or guidelines or governing principles. And for me, this is always, this time of year, provides that opportunity to be reminded of our fiduciary responsibility, if you will, as well as legal obligation. And I'm glad that we have this as a backbone because it allows us to, I think, even encourage members of our community when they may suspect, allege, or express, you know, certain thoughts, feelings, and/or beliefs. We can always just simply refer to the Code of Ethics that we have signed and that we fully support and agree with.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Any other comments? Director Workman?
Section B, in performing the proper functions of a School Board Member, I think these are all really, really good. I'd like to focus on a couple of them. Number two, remember my responsibility is to set policy, not implement policy. And number five, work through the Superintendent, not over or around the Superintendent. And I really appreciate the really good working relationship we've had with you thus far, Dr. Pecel, and I'm looking forward to continuing that.
Other comments? Director Cook?
Yeah, I wanted to highlight Section A7, that as a member of the School Board, I will be primarily motivated by a desire to provide the best possible education for the students of my school district. The school district is a big, complex entity with lots of moving parts, and there's lots of stakeholders. And I think it's really important that we have this grounding principle, that it's the interest of the students that are always the primary motivation of everything that we're trying to accomplish, and it's an opportunity for all of us to have something to rally around together. So I like that.
Thank you. Dr. McLaughlin?
I wanted to focus on Section B3, that I consider myself a trustee of public education and do my best to protect, conserve, and advance its progress. I think about this provision primarily as a member of the Legislative Committee of the Board, that I think there are many opportunities in front of us this year to advance the progress of public education, particularly here locally and with our legislative partners at the state level. So I'm looking forward to that.
Director Garcia?
I also appreciate, I think it's funny that it's in here, A1, as a member of the School Board, I will attend School Board meetings. I think that's important. But the one that I, that really sort of resonates with me, in addition to many other aspects of the ethics policy, is C... what? C4, to keep an open mind about how I will vote on any position until the Board has met and fully discussed the issue. So even though I do a lot of my own internal work and I gain knowledge and perspective from other people outside of the Board, I really do like to come in as sort of a well-informed yet somewhat clean slate in terms of how I come to that decision, and/or if I come to the Board table with what I feel like is, like, everything's sort of weighing in this one direction, I would say oftentimes, particularly in matters of finance, where Director Amundson would kind of give us a little, hmm, but think about this, and I thought, now I have to weigh that. So I appreciate that little piece of the policy.
Director Marvin? And under A, there are two lines there that I find particularly important. Number three is listen to the opinions and views of others, and there's a long list of which others. And then number nine, recognize the need to represent all children, all parents, all guardians, all community members. And...
And I think we take that very seriously, and we really do try to listen, to respect all perspectives. It's frustrating sometimes because when a particular group comes and says, this is what we need you to do, and we hear you, but there are other groups saying, do exactly the opposite. And so as board members, at the end of the day, we are obligated to do what's right for children, for the students. And sometimes, you know, that's spelled out in statute. But we do, we are obligated to keep an open mind. But at the end of the day, our first obligation is to provide the kind of world-class education that our kids deserve.
So for me, I've always looked at E4, participate in school board action after considering the recommendation of the superintendent and only after the superintendent has furnished adequate information supporting the recommendation. I think one of the things that is often complicated for people to understand is that role of the school board in governance and the superintendent in management. And the reason the superintendent sits here as an ex officio member and that we have full representation of our cabinet and we have speakers who come is that most of the information resides with them because they are managing and operating the district. Our best decision-making comes because of the work they put in to develop the information to study the issue. But it is a back and forth. They're very receptive to the school board's direction and questions. And that's one of the things I appreciate about our relationship with everybody responsible for management, but also take very seriously the kind of information that comes to the board because we need to be fully informed before we make the decisions, and I'm fortunate to say that I believe we are. Any other observations? Thank you, board members. The next item on the agenda is 4.03, School Board Committee Assignments. At this time of year, we look at our school board committees in policy 213, which identify the standing committees of the school board, and policy 21301, which identify the community advisory committees and liaison organizations that board members serve on. And Director Marvin has done some work in asking school board members what their preferences are as far as service on the board, on these committees. And the membership of the committees for the 2022-23, for the standing committees of the board, community engagement, Director Barlow, Director Garcia, and Chair Nathan. For the policy committee, Vice Chair Workman, Director Garcia, and Chair Nathan. The legislative committee, Director Garcia, Director McLaughlin, and Vice Chair Workman. Our advisory and community committees, parent and family engagement, will be Director Barlow. The community curriculum and instruction advisory committee will be Director Marvin. Our reconsideration committee will be Director Cook. The insurance trust committee will be Director McLaughlin. Our liaison to gateway will be Vice Chair Workman. Our board members serving on the Rochester Public School Foundation will be Director Cook. Our liaison to the Minnesota State High School League will be Director Barlow. Our liaison to the student school board will be Director Marvin. And the board members on the community budget advisory committee will be Director Cook, Director McLaughlin, and Director Marvin. We also have other team assignments. As you might have heard in December, Director, Vice Chair Workman and former Director Amundson served on the MSBA Delegate Assembly. That's a role that is elected every year, should members of the board choose to want to participate in that, but we've had pretty consistent participation. I don't think we'll give that up. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts is a virtual attendance monthly by the chair and other members who are interested. Meet and confer is the board chair, and the executive team is the board chair and vice chair. So that is for our information. Item 4.04 is the review of the school district mission statement. Policy 104 requires the school board will review the school district's mission, vision, and goals annually, especially when members of the school board change. The school board will conduct a comprehensive review of the mission, including the beliefs and values of the community, every three to five years unless otherwise specified by the school board. Now, we recently went through a development process for our Planning for Purpose Strategic Plan where we reaffirmed this mission statement, and we further strengthened the district's commitment to this mission for all students. But this is an opportunity for any board members to make any comments or in the annual review of our mission statement. Hearing none, we will have completed that annual requirement and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is board member committee updates. So these would be your updates from the last time you attended or participated in any of the committees that you were assigned to in 2022. Anybody have any comments?
I have a question. Are we permitted to share meetings that are not on committee assignments?
Yes.
Okay. So I attended the MSBA coffee and conversation this morning, virtually, and it was interesting because there are so many districts across the state that are experiencing declining enrollment, which is predicted for quite a number of years. So there was interesting discussion about why and how things could be fixed. One suggestion was that school districts should try to expand their offerings, and I was really happy to hear that and really encouraged at the immense progress that we have made in this district on expanding our opportunities for students. One district is expanding their pre-K program, and they are going to have three-year-old kids riding the bus with all grade levels, and the parents are enthusiastically supportive of this. I guess that's something that's much easier to do in a smaller district.
Director Marvin.
The Community Engagement Committee, in collaboration with the rest of the board, is going to be having another listening session. This one will be Saturday morning at North Rip Elementary School from 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock. This is a very informal session like the last one. Board members will be present. People can come in, sit down at a table with a board member or two, let us know what you're thinking about, let us know what the board needs to know, ask questions, and if we don't have answers, we'll get your contact information, we'll get them back to you. So if you can come for five minutes or see for an hour, we'd be happy to see you. More information will be on the website.
Any other committee? Oh, Director Workman.
Yes, one more. There is an agenda for the AMSD Legislative Meeting coming up on this Friday. You can attend in person or virtually, and AMSD would especially like a response if you are going to be there in attendance because they want to make sure there is enough food for everybody for breakfast. If you haven't gotten that email from AMSD, let me know, and I can forward it to you.
Does the Legislative Committee know if any of our representatives are planning to attend in person, or?
I'm sending the invite out tonight.
Okay.
I needed to wait because we have two new members of our contingency and wanted to make sure I invited them all together, and they were just online today.
Yep, great, thanks.
I do have a question about Dr. Marvin's update, though. Is that also going to go out to community and family, rather than, not just on the website?
Yeah, our communications director is handling that.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. Does any board member have any item they'd like to remove from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is passed. Thank you.
Chair, Nathan, if I might, we included on that consent agenda the passing of a member of the Rochester Public Schools community. James Campbell was a custodian, was assigned at John Marshall High School. He hadn't been with the district for a long time, joined us actually in August, and in fact, as many of our staff do, was responding to a request, an assignment to help short-staffed, the short-staffed team at Kellogg Middle School do some snow removal on November 30th, and he unfortunately, deeply unfortunately, suffered a heart attack, which subsequently passed away from. And so we send our thoughts and condolences and prayers out to his family and want to just take a moment. He was not somebody that was in our district for a long time, but by all accounts was really a wonderful person. One of the leaders of our maintenance unit sent a note that described James this way. So James Campbell was a very hard worker and a great team player. Although he was new to the district, everybody liked working with James and agreed he had a lot of ideas to make our job better. He was also a deeply loving and good family man of Rochester Public Schools student, I might say. So we are with his family at this time, also with the JM community, and in fact, the staff at Kellogg that was with him at that really unfortunate moment. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our focus topic area, item 701, which is our skip update from John Marshall High School. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to invite the team from John Marshall to come up while I just briefly give a little bit of context for this. As the board knows, our strategic plan moves on two levels. We have DISCs, or district-wide initiatives for systems change, which are efforts we have underway to strengthen our support for students across schools, and we have skips, or school-wide continuous improvement plans at the school level. And this board has been taking a deep dive into both through the focus topics at our meetings. Somebody asked me the other day, are you thinking the board will always devote a significant share of its agendas to looking at a single school's skip plan? And so I thought I'd just share that. My assumption is that, in fact, once we have moved through our current rotation, we probably will not continue this exact same process. But as we are now in the really critical turning point in systems change at both the school and the district level, the previous executive committee, and I think the board has been enthused about that, decided this is a really good way to spend our time at this critical point. But it doesn't mean that, for instance, every year the JM team will come and do an update on their skip plan. I'll invite board feedback on that once we get through the cycle. So want to thank you all, especially on a snowy and icy day when somebody canceled school, for making your way in here. I'll let Principal Ruzek start us out. The one thing I'll say, you probably were going to do this anyway, but I know it would be helpful if we had everyone introduce themselves. I also want to say I had a board member send a very helpful suggestion that in the future, it might be useful for us also to have name tags for people or nameplates for people who are there. So it's a great suggestion. Thanks to Director Workman for suggesting that. We didn't quite get on that for tonight, but I think it's a really good way to think about it. But if you could begin with some introductions, and then the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Pecal. Thank you, board. Congratulations on your new appointments. That's exciting, and questioning your judgment for sure. Thank you for your work. And I will say, as just before this group up here introduces themselves, I'm grateful to them for coming, and we have students with us tonight, and a pair of our fantastic teachers, and two of us administrators, and so I am appreciative of their work because you would not have wanted to just hear me speak about this. So I'm Matt Ruzek, the proud principal of John Marshall High School. I'm a handful of months into it and could not be happier about my location. It is a place with a pulse, and that is a requirement for me in regards to be here. So I'll let the group introduce themselves.
Shane Hewick, I'm a teacher, biology teacher, and I'm also a center director for the 21st Century Fund.
I'm Manasa Yaraboina, I'm student body president at John Marshall.
Valerie Wasper, I teach social studies. This is my 22nd year, and I appreciate, Jeannie, because if you remember, many years ago, I went to many mentor meetings with you and Barb Milburn. So thank you for your leadership on the board. We were both just children.
I'm already Thursden, I'm one assistant principals, and this is my 50th at John Marshall High School.
So without further ado, we'll proceed, and we were charged with the task of sharing our work with you all, and I'll be perfectly candid, I perseverated over it more than I probably should have. The reason behind that is that I opened by saying John Marshall is a place with a tremendous pulse. It's hard to capture that in slides. So before we present and after we present, I'll wholeheartedly encourage all of you and invite you with open arms to come over and see us, hear us, feel what it is to be at JM because it's the only true way to capture the essence of the work that's being done. You missed, JM gives extravaganza over the month of December, and I was warned about it, and I'll be honest, it's one of the best months I experienced in my 20-some-odd years in education. So the slide you're going to look at tonight, and I'll open our first one here.
I'll be your clicker tonight.
I can play. I don't mind. Okay, all right, thank you so much. So our first slide is just giving a quick synopsis of who we are. But again, this is sterile. It is not who we are, it is our numbers. And we're a full-service community school. We're incredibly proud to be a full-service community school. We're creating a culture, family with students, staff, parents, and community. The culture focuses on high academic youth development and authentic relationships. That's the elevator speech to what John Marshall is aspiring to be. You can see our numbers, roughly 1,600 students. Our demographics follow, our free-introduced price lunch. These are ever-changing numbers that really give a surface kind of summary of the students and staff that live within John Marshall, but it is not who we are. So would you mind clicking the next one? This year, we do have many new staff, including myself as the lead principal. Our core, our focus this year is identifying and strengthening our purpose, culture, and relationships. And by that, what we really are striving for is that we are not a school built around a program, we are not a school built around a system. We are a school who is going to celebrate people. And by that, we mean all of our people. And we know that we will not be a high-functioning, high-academic-achieving site unless all parties, all 1,638, all 150-some-odd staff, we have to be invested. So when we met this summer, and we've talked, and I applaud Dr. Pecal for helping us investigate the timing of our data retreat or our skip retreat that we've hosted for the last number of years, because the relevance of the timing didn't seem to fit. But for us, it was relevant, and we were afforded the opportunity for two days to sit in restorative circle. We dialogued in conversation about a rift between special education and general education. We dialogued about the lack of representation in our students and staff, the lack of student voice, the lack of familial involvement. We got angry, we got happy, we cried, honestly. So was it time well spent? You bet it was. We need more of that. So when we invest in this, and as you start to look at what our skip goals are, they're valuable, but they also have very targeted, tangible benchmarks to hit with qualitative, quantitative data, and anecdotal record. And we're going to be really, really intentional in how we pursue it, but none of those marks or measures will supersede the value of the human beings that reside within our site. If one individual does not feel it, then that one individual has the ability to stop the gears in our system. So, and these folks are going to articulate that beautifully, and Manasa is charged with keeping me on time, and she's a nationally-recognized speaker, and so she's already frustrated. All right, so our two goals, and these are really the Cliff Notes version, and if you didn't go to college and purchased the yellow Cliff Notes book, it was such a treat to buy this, you know, giant text and then go and buy the one-ounce. All right, our first goal is focused specifically on JM family connection. This is specifically in regards to the superintendent's charge around relationship. And we are identifying relationship as authentic relationship, not adherent to a collection of information that says we've completed a task, but rather actually knowing each other, encouraging civil dissidents, enjoying the opportunity to have debate. And, you know, some of the things that have come from it have been a challenge to staff where we have documented, and we actually have these wonderful Google charts that document how many staff have been visited in the midst of a day, a week, and a year. Some of that conversation even happened in our skip retreat where we talked about a simple remedy to not knowing each other is getting out of our classrooms more. And we had a staff member who had the courage to say, that's fine, but I'm in the bandwagon. wing. So, I have to go a lot farther. I don't have a department that can meet me and talk with me out in the hall. It takes courage to cause change." I put down joy and risk. I stole it directly from what Dr. Pecel had just shared in regards to leadership. Joy and risk is what we're pursuing with these goals. All right. Thanks, Jackie, because you're keeping me on task. The second goal we'll get to as we proceed through because I'm already way off. All right. Focus of the goal. Thanks, Jackie, for really honestly, you're so good to me. Our focus this year is on a high-functioning family and staff. It's invested in the work and high-quality work environment. You can see the pictures. The middle picture there is of Rodney. Rodney's our equity specialist, but that does not do him justice. Rodney does way more than just a singular title. He embodies family. He's a graduate of John Marshall High School. He visits homes. He resonates what we're supposed to be, and he's handing our rocket. We nominate once a week, a staff member nominates another staff member. Rodney nominated Rebecca Seni, who's our chemical dependency specialist. This is just one simple example of staff seeing staff, getting an opportunity to know what they do. The gentleman sitting in the right corner, this is a brand-new staff member on my right. I'm sorry, as I'm looking, maybe yours is different. But this young man is named Eddie Bryson. Eddie Bryson did not come through education in traditional sense. He was attracted to our youth football program, and we found that he had a tremendous amount of skills. Upon asking if he was interested in working at our school system because we had a 1.0 art opening, lo and behold, he has an art degree. He also came here on a full academic scholarship. He came to us from Memphis, Tennessee. We just started Rodney's journey in our JM family in October. So, our focus is to make him feel as if he's the most valued member of our family while he comes to us. Our interest is that he stays because what he has done is when he's identified that students aren't working, he asked me and he asked a relationship coach to monitor and manage his art room so that he could find the student in the hall. This is a shift. This is a paradigm shift in the way that we think about education, the value of the one student. So, Eddie gets playing. The picture down on the left is this beautiful mess that we call the JM staff family. We're all wearing Rocket Family T-shirts. And so, again, with tireless effort, but also with documented plans and processes, we're ensuring that we capture who our staff members are. Next, please. All right. Manasa, would you take it from here and share with us what that picture of you is doing up there?
Yeah, so I had the honor, once again, for the second time ever, John Marshall took, our speech and debate team took us to the national qualifiers for a debate team specifically in the fall. And you see a picture of Hershey and I. Hershey is our first alternate for our national congressional debate team. So, she will be taking over and going to nationals as an alternate. And I qualified, placing third, and so I will be going over to Arizona this summer to represent John Marshall there. And just to kind of tell you how much of a family we are with our speech and debate team, even with our extremely low funding, we've come together as a family to support each and every student on the debate and speech team. Like Mr. Ruzek said earlier, Rodney Sharp, Mr. Sharp drove a van in horrible conditions just to get our team to state this year. So, it really takes a family to be able to get our voices out there because we, as students, have so much to say, and our power and our passion needs to be put out there. And that is why we, as a speech and debate team, we are the most diverse and the most inclusive team in Minnesota. We do not believe in pushing anyone away. We include everyone. We don't have an audition process or anything. Every single student on our speech and debate team has a voice, and that is why we have English learning students, students from vast different socioeconomic backgrounds. And today, they are the most successful people I've ever seen, and I have the honor to be a part of this team and to see them grow as speakers and as people. And I'm so happy. The John Marshall family here are backing us all up and just pushing us and our passion and propelling us forward.
Wait, go back one more. I want to do one quick. You know, the group of four boys, those are four boys that do play basketball for us, but they're not recognized in the slide for doing that, for their accolades in basketball. All of these boys have incredible attendance this year, and they also have incredible ownership of our building. They take it upon themselves to clean our cafeteria after breakfast and lunch. OT, did we ever ask him to do it?
No.
Not once. The group of boys and young lady with Coach Riggitt, he's wearing the R on his sweatshirt. Coach Riggitt's being recognized with that group, not because of his accolades as a special education teacher, not because of his efforts as our football coach, but because he's empowered that group of students to find voice. They're pushing for a student union at JM, much to the consternation of some of the adults. But you know what we'll do? We'll argue about it. We'll figure it out. And there will be a student union at John Marshall High School because those students had the courage to speak up. But they needed an advocate. They needed a person to say that they were worth advocating for, and so that's where Coach Riggitt is. And Taishan Bean is just an incredible human being, literally gets recognized all the time, so I had to put his picture up. Thank you. All right. Our staff levers, and I think this is because Jackie even said to me, "Make sure you're concise and quick so that these two folks have time to ask us questions." But we're doing a whole staff onward book study. We're in the early phases of ensuring that all of our staff have been trained in restorative practices. We have a Rocket Advisory Group that is, or Rocket Advisory Hour that has started for our freshmen and sophomores. We are looking into these levers, both in our curriculum, our PD, our PLCs. We have something that was deemed PLT, where we have cross-curricular collaboration between staff so that they can talk about passion projects and ways in which we promote their students. So, those are a few of those. Staff and family, next slide. We'll, you guys can check that out. All right. Lever two, our goal two, and the levers for goal two. Our goal two is, again, has great opportunity for organic growth, but it also has very simplistic targets to show measurement of success, one of which being all ninth-grade students acquire six credits. Something that we quickly unearthed as we go back, and OT is responsible for our ninth and 10th grade students this year in his administrative role, is that we have 10th and 11th grade students who will have far fewer credits than they should. And some of them, it's almost dire, where we met this morning even in my office and talked about, "What do we do with a junior who only has three credits?" Honestly. So, for us to start to look at high student achievement, this is not the standard. This is the general expectation. And what do we do? It directly linked to our first goal of relationships and ensuring that students find a measure of value with themselves in our site. So, both Shane and Goody are here to talk to you all about a little bit of what we've introduced in regards to incorporating our new ninth graders. Also, consider, we still have just recently emerged from this pandemic. And all too quickly, we have dismissed the idea that students are ready to do school. Well, you don't have to stop pushing high-achieving academics to ensure authentic relationships. Quite the contrary, you should do both. So, these two will talk about that. You can do the next slide, please.
Is it okay if I just talk about 23 Cent?
Please.
Okay, so, I'm the 21st Century Center Director, and I took over for Kurt Thompson. He's kind of founded the whole thing here at John Marshall. We've kind of gone away from having kind of like, at the end of the school day, we got away from like, just having like, another set of school hours, and we went into just more like a tutoring and then having, giving the students ownership and allowing them to form clubs or affinity groups. And so, we've really kind of taken off this year with that, which has been really cool. We've got about 10 groups or 10 clubs going right now, two or three of which are student-run. I think K-pop is one, in which I actually took part in like, a little dance party with them, which was kind of fun. We've got a chess club that's kind of really taking off and also is kind of unofficially partnering with the Chess League. We've got a coach coming in and actually teaching them, which has been really cool. One of the things I'd really like to talk about and kind of piggyback on is we're, in the summer, we also, the 21st Century does a six-week program where we allow students to get a chance to get some credit back. And we like to do that during the school year, to look for a half-credit, general elective credit to give, basically try to get the kids back on the bus, give them a sense of hope so that they, you know, want to be at school. And that's the whole idea with the whole 21st Century program is to give the kids a place where they can feel they can get back on the bus, get a clean slate, and keep going back to school. And what we're noticing, which is really cool, is the kids that are doing the tutoring, kind of once they get back caught up, they start going to some of the clubs. And then, they're going to some of the different clubs each day because not every club runs every day. They might run once a week or twice a week. So, we've got, like I said, one of the things we're really excited about is a possible gaming club. One of our teachers, Joshua Knight, is going to be starting that. And that's kind of going to go along or piggyback with esports, possibly sports team-type deal. And then, the club could actually be like a place to allow them to maybe practice and then maybe join the team. For example, not all my chess club people are on the, you know, working towards a league. They just come there to play chess. But it's really been an interesting thing to see the kids actually wanting to come. We've got, sometimes there might be 50 kids coming there after school. Probably average about 20 kids a day, but like, on a Wednesday with chess and anime club, and we've got a Rube Goldberg club going. And I think in March, there's going to be a state competition. So, we're hoping to turn in a video there. Besides that, like I said, in the summer, we also did a onboarding program, and that's that Rocket Launchpad. Brian Faloon, my supervisor, and also Amy Ike over here, in my interview, Brian had mentioned that he wanted to kind of get something going for like, training ninth graders on how to be students. And so, when he told me that, you know, and I said, "Hey, I think I have something. I know Ms. Wasmer and another colleague, Ms. Thompson, they've been doing this for years on a shoestring budget and not being compensated." And so, I knew that they would be ready to do something big, and they did a great job for those three days. I think they gave the kids, and Student Council also helped out. So, we had some really good student beers, too. So, it's really kind of fun. So.
I'll turn it back over to you, or do you want to talk about?
Sure. I'll just mention quickly, Shane did a great job administering the 21st Century Grant. For years at JM, we did something called Rocket Pride Camp, back when there was money for things like that. We'd go to Ironwood Springs, and that was this wonderful experience. And that money is long gone. So, as Shane has said, we tried to work in like, on three-hour late starts or find a way to bring our freshmen into the Rocket family, and you just can't do it in a three-hour late start. So, with Shane's help and guidance, Annie Thompson, who runs our Student Council, and the Student Council of Students and myself, spent, I don't know how many hours, planning this retreat, we called it the Launchpad, for the incoming freshmen to come in. And we focused, you know, we've got students coming off a pandemic who don't know how really to be students anymore. That transition from eighth grade to ninth grade is a very difficult thing. We've got a continually changing population at John Marshall, 51% white. That means 49% non-white with an almost exclusively white staff. So, we have to build those relationships. We have to make sure that those freshmen, when they come in on the very first day, feel like, "Hey, I've been here. This is my school. I belong here." NPR came down and did a story on it. It was phenomenal. I can't say enough about Manasa and the Student Council and the cheerleaders and the band were there every day. They greeted the, we had busing thanks to the 21st Century Grant. Those kids would get off the bus, and they were just attacked by Student Council and cheerleaders and band. And the first day, it was a little like, what the heck is happening? But by the end, the kids were coming in the door cheering and screaming and that, you know, we gave them all the words to the fight song and the cheers, and we did all, I mean, just all kinds of get to know you and get to know John Marshall. But we also were very intentional about, "Here's the student handbook, and here's the registration guide, and here are all the different things that you can do at John Marshall." And we're very intentional about, "Here are the clubs," and, you know, involvement is a great indicator of success. So, how are you going to be involved? I don't teach freshmen, but even, you know, even this, you know, we're halfway through the school year, I still have freshmen that I worked with those three days that I see in the hallway. And they might not remember my name, but they're like, "Hey." And so, it's just these wonderful, wonderful connections. And, you know, we rented inflatables, and they did tie-dye T-shirts, and we had competitions. And then, we worked very intentionally for that first day of school that was just for freshmen to piggyback on everything that we did so that the students that weren't there for the Launchpad Academy got a small taste of it. And the students that were there, it was very empowering for them to say, "Hey, oh, this is what we did. I can help you with that. We did that." And so, I don't know, it feels, I was telling Matt this morning, it feels like we're kind of getting back to JM family, the good old Diane Eau Strip days, for those of you that remember Diane. Like, we're all in this together. It's so cliche. Now, I have that song in my head. I just, I really, I look at the quote, "This is the best start of the school year I've had since, for 17 years." And I didn't say that, but I could have. I mean, I think the direction of Mr. Ruzek, I think this, we're all in mentality, accepting our identity. We're very different than any of the schools and embracing who we are. Our relationship coaches, that I think OT maybe will speak a little bit about, and our staff. I've been in all three schools, and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. They're all fabulous, but this is somewhere special, and it feels good to have that back again.
Please. We have, like I said, we have all these different programs, and I just want to do a little shout-out to the JM staff. There's not, maybe not a lot of schools that would have up to 15 teachers willing to stay beyond the school day and to do these things here, like we do ACT prep. We've got teachers that are willing to, you know, step up and do those kind of things, too. It's really been a joy for me to do this particular job as the Center Director, to be able to work with the staff, and it's been awesome.
Yeah, and I'll just say the tutoring through the 21st Century Grant, I mean, that's the funding that we desperately need. The kids are struggling to be students, and I have the pleasure of working one night a week with tutoring, and it's not a single student that I have in my classes. But I get to work with, kind of, the same kids show up every time, and I'll see them in the hallway, like, "Hey, Goody." I'm like, "Hey, how's that history project?" You know, it's 1,600 kids. I don't know them. They don't know me. But now, we know each other, and that's what we need to get students caught up. It's the relationships than the tutoring, and it all works together, so.
Okay, next slide. Sorry. Right with me. So, with both of these goals, you know, we have specific targeted efforts. We have leveraged certain aspects in regards to educational practices. But I think, you know, the paramount piece to this, and Goody just referenced this, we have an incredibly diverse staff. We also have made a tireless effort to diversify, I'm sorry, student body, diverse student body. We've made a tireless effort to diversify our staff. And in that, I asked OT to be here tonight, and I'm incredibly proud of his efforts this year. I'm incredibly proud of the things that he has done to incorporate voice of our staff of color. He's been challenged by students of color with me present, and he's handled himself unbelievably in a role that is unique unto him. And he bears that with great responsibility, but also humility, and I'm grateful for that. So, I put on here because I think it's relevant, and I don't expect you all to read it. I put on there as well, "We're forming an intervention team. MTSS is going to inform our practice." These are all things that are coming, and we're going to work our tails off to ensure that it happens. But OT, would you speak a little bit to our new relationship coaches, please?
Yes. I think we should start by saying that one of the objectives was to build a community relationship, try to figure out people in the community that know families that are willing to work inside the school district. And so, we were able to establish those relationships with Coach Andre, with Bud, who represents certain, brought to community functions in the community, expanding those resources and talking to the community, which for me, it was great because there was a lot of people in the community that didn't even know JM had that as a superintendent. So, for me, I was really taking it all in and just really getting myself out there after that and just saying, "Okay, let me expose myself more to the community as a person of color that's part of this district." And I think as we looking at JM and the culture of JM... And I think as we, as we looking at JM and the culture of JM, for me, it was important to hire staff that represent our student body. And then get those staff in, train them, but also allow them to be part of the family and not just be gatekeepers, to stop fights or to pull kids out of classrooms. Involve them in the process. When they pulling kids into my office, they are part of those meetings. Why I do that is because they see those students in the hallways more than we. They are developing relationships with those kids more than we because they in hallways. So as I was meeting with Coach Andre at the gym one day, me and him was working out the racket, I was like, you know what, I don't like the security title. We need to come up with something different. And me and him put our heads together and was like, let's come up with relationship coaches. What does that mean? That means we have people in the building that are establishing relationships with the students and not being a security guy. Because the security, after everything that was going on in Minneapolis and across the country, we wanted to break the stigma of security in the hallways by giving them a different title that the students can relate to. And so we came up with the idea of relationship coaches. I threw it off to Matt, and Matt was like, let's go with it. And I, and I think part of the process from Eric to Matt, for me, they have allowed me to run. They allowed me to use my skill set to be successful in JM and not hold me back. When you have that, then it's easy for you to let the staff that you supervise to give the same agency to them so that way they can be successful. And I think that's why we've really been successful with the staff at JM, because we allowing them to have voice, we allowing them to be part of the family and not be excluded over here because we only need you for certain situations. We allowing them to be part of the whole process. And because of that, it's really good to hear people say, what y'all doing at JM? We hear some good things about JM. One of my first introductions to Dr. Pekel was at my daughter's daddy day, daddy day at Lakin. And I was like, hey, I gotta introduce myself. I woke up to him, and he said, hey, I heard about you and I heard some things that you're doing that's really good, and I'd like to know, what are you doing over there? That was, that was the first meeting I had with him. So I'm looking at if the superintendent is hearing, what are we doing over there? Let's keep that boat moving. Let's, let's go, let me go back, share those stories, and let's go ahead and implement that to the building. And we've just been really looking out, you know, we have right now, we have two African-American females in our hallways, we have two African-American men in our hallways, we have an African-American male in our specialty department, we have teachers. So we, we really build it. From the first year I got to JM into now, the diversity has increased tremendously. And I, and I just hope that we continue to work with the building, so.
You can do the next slide here, and I'll wrap up. I put on here the creation of Rocket Advocacy Group. You know, you've heard a comment thread, we're doing, we're going to do these amazing, amazing things regardless of funding. It will never, ever be the hurdle that prevents us from doing remarkable things because our kids won't allow us to do anything other than remarkable. And so as we look, we got edu climber training this morning, we started plugging in our data that we're monitoring for both of our skip goals. And we can see upward trajectory. However, I know that we need a community to support us. Also, some of the things we're doing, you won't be surprised, is receiving resistance. The gaming club received resistance, asking for specific support for our speech and debate, even though they're nationally recognized, receives resistance. Change always is met with resistance. Now, the beauty of it is, as you can see, we have 88 participants in our alumni slash community who are wanting JM to excel. So we had our first call to action, there are folks who are going to be providing funding, there are all that are athletic facilities, they want to do more with our auditorium. And I'm, I'm telling you, we're going to create a stir that will be hard to diminish. Not me, but students like Manasa. And so I put as our last one, there's schedule and course focus. Though, that's our next phase, as we start to look at adhering to the rigid practices of schedule based on historical educational practices that do not benefit our students that reside at JM. We're going to collect as much information as we can, we're going to compile as much student voice as we can, we're going to work with our community representative to support that, and then we're going to push it forward with your all's support, we hope. So without further ado, question. I'm so sorry, that was far from concise.
Board members, any questions or comments, Dr. Brother?
Sure. First of all, excellent presentation. Question and then two observations. First question, student voice, so critical. Thank you, Matt, for ensuring that the board had opportunity to capture that. Forgive me for, how do you pronounce her name?
Manasa.
Manasa?
Yes.
Okay, great. That wasn't the question. You spoke of speech debate team and how everyone is welcomed, the belief that every student has a voice. Could you perhaps share how, as student body president, how other students who may not be a part of the speech debate club, how they might discover their place, where they are welcomed, where they are able to discover their voice? Can you?
Yeah. So the first thing I want to say is when I got elected to be student body president, I mean, that's, I didn't take that lightly. It's not just a position to me, it's not just entitled to me, it's, it's a fulfillment of being a leader to me. And my first ever interaction with Dr. Pekel was at, in the summer, when I was part of the Rise for Youth Program through Mayo. And immediately, he told me, you know, whatever you need help with, just contact me, and you're going to love your new principal. And those two words just told me how much support I'm going to get from all the staff and everyone here who was going to support a student body. So with that, for the first two weeks of when the school year started, I took my first two weeks sitting in classrooms and really observing our students. And what I immediately saw was the disassociation between culture in our, in our student body and our students, and especially with our EL students, which hold a very important place in my heart, because I was an EL student myself, was that they were missing their home country and their culture. So that's where I encourage our student body to get together and find a voice. And that's when I talked to Goody, I talked to many of our staff, and told them that we have to get together and we have to find a way to celebrate every single voice at JM. So what I'm working on right now is getting people from different demographics within John Marshall and pushing them to really share what they see is lacking in our student body, especially when it comes to culture, right? So a lot of students came up and told me, hey, Manasa, like, I'm Muslim, and I celebrate Eid, and I don't see that representation here. Well, now, that is what my focus has been on, is really getting our Muslim population who want to celebrate Eid as a school, having our student body celebrate with them and really get them educated on what culture is and what our demographic is at John Marshall. So through student council, through Model UN, through Diversity Council, what we're doing is we're collecting all this data and really empowering our students to come forward and talk about what the discrepancies are in our student body. And that itself, just going up and just giving them a little nudge has bought so much feedback. And that's when we saw the most student, just engagement with our staff, with us, and it's brought our staff and students together. And I have never seen this much enthusiasm when it comes to actually sharing your passion and voice in our student body.
Thank you. Madam Chair, from high continue.
Yes, please.
So the class of 26, if we're speaking of our current group of ninth graders, that's exciting to hear that you're meeting them where they are to ensure their success. And I look forward to hearing the results. I'm sure you won't wait until 2026 to come back and tell us, but that's so important, where you were able to identify that we have students that are progressing through being promoted to the next grade level and not perhaps acquiring the credit they need. We're going to have a later topic of discussion dealing with grading for learning. I'll save my comments regarding that for that. But observations were, based on your presentation, the cultural focus and how you define that, high academic achievement, youth development, authentic relationships, that's how you're, that's the JM culture, the vibe, what makes you the Rockets, if you will. By the way, two of my daughters graduated from JM, so I kind of have a natural bias of them. And then the culture of family, how you also define that as students, staff, parents, and community. I thought that was so important because it really embodies, I think, what we're trying to accomplish, what we want everyone to realize as a member of the, of Rochester Public Schools, that you're not just there as a standalone entity. You spoke of being at the other local high schools, and, and I think the fact that JM may be on this direction of family will definitely set you guys apart. Matt, I will take you up and wanting to swing by. JM, when Eric was there, I did that, and it was a great opportunity, very excited, saw some great things going on. I'm sure even greater things are going on now, so look forward to it.
Any other comments? Oh, there you are, Dr. Workman.
I had a whole list of potential questions for you, like this long, and it's been reduced to like three. So thank you for your presentation and the detail that you went into. Is it okay if I ask all three at once?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the first, and these are somewhat dry. On slide, the slide, I think it's slide nine on the Goal Two Lovers, the school board students, or the student school board is mentioned, is that a reference to the student school board that's attended by?
Correct.
Okay. I thought that was. And then I think it's great that we've hired these relationship coaches, and I really hope it's something that we can keep in our budget. So where does, where in the budget does that come from right now? How's that being supported?
To Mr. Thurston's point, they're hired as our quote-unquote security paras.
Okay.
We have fundamentally changed the title of the position. I suppose we should talk to HR about that prior to announcing that.
Well, that's on the walk-in, that's on the walk-in. Carl wouldn't know anything about that.
That clears that up.
Yeah, so that's where that comes. But I will say, though, that it's important to emphasize this. I understand the size of our district, but the individuals that we've hired, we've hired with purpose and intention. They fit us. They're from us. And I mean us collectively, culturally, racially, some of them are JM grads. That is, in my eyes, and these folks will yell at me if they disagree, is the only way we sustain a population in regards to our staff that represents our students, and then to fight like hell for them, to not tone police them, to not change who they are, but to help them fit within our patchwork quilt, make it even better. So that's where they came from.
Can I, can I say something on that too? I, I want to say thank you too, to the board and the cabinet for increasing the pay. Because that was very important across the district. In my five years at JM, we rapidly were going through relationship coaches, because they just didn't want to be there because of the pay. And I think by increasing that, people are willing to want to work, especially, I can only speak for JM, we have people that's, that's there, that's invested and feel like they get compensated for the work that they're doing. So definitely want to thank you guys for making that possible.
And then before I ask my final question, I'd just like to mention that some of the very best years of my teaching career were the 22 that I had at John Marshall High School. This was a long time ago, don't ask when.
I remember.
Yes. But it was a wonderful place to work, and I'm just so pleased to see how it's growing and the work that you're doing to make sure all students are included. And as an orchestra teacher, I know relationship building is critical for success, so thank you for that. Then, so my final question was, on the additional information and action steps slide, you had mentioned fundraising. Could you give me some idea of what, what that fundraising is supporting?
Yeah, so some of that comes internally, you know, the smaller fundraising efforts, for example, our soccer team hosted a soccer tournament, and, you know, we don't have matching uniforms for our soccer team. Cost roughly $20,000, which didn't blow my mind, but then also recognize that we're increasing in size and numbers. So those are kind of the small ones. The larger funding efforts that we're looking at is in regards to this JM Rocket Advocacy Group. We have large organizations, and what we're trying to look at is almost a tiered approach to identifying areas that folks would like to support, whether it's a physical aspect of our school, like, you know, improving the football field, or if it's affording the opportunity for our band students to receive private tutoring from an institution in Minneapolis that's willing to give it to us, for about 30% of the cost because they know our demographics. For me, it's the effort to identify that source and then to get them down to 30%, and then to attach them to somebody who will pay for the effort. So those are the fundraising things. So we had our first meeting, we had our first effort. John's been very helpful in talking financially so that we do it all appropriately. So once we get each individualized idea of support, we have community schools that folks will continually support fiscally or through, you know, tangible items. But those efforts aren't completely formulated yet, but I can rattle off a few for sure.
So this is fundraising from external sources? It's not from students selling cookie dough?
I painted that since I was in this district. I, I, the idea of pushing, and I apologize for those folks who want that, but to say to our students, you need to go out and schlep materials to have a quality education is against what I feel is appropriate. Furthermore, we have families in our system that struggle to pay the fees that we ask them to pay as a public institution. So I'm not going to have them improve more debt so that their child has a free and appropriate education.
Thank you.
And if I may add, I think that this is so great because the biggest barrier right now for so many clubs and activities and students at JM is that financial barrier that is stopping them from excellence. And especially when it comes to our, like, and I will advocate for the speech debate team right now, is that we have a vast majority of kids who come from a struggling background, and for them to be able to get that comparative advantage in the real, like, in our real social life, when it's we, like, once we step out of high school, that's, that funding is so critical for them, because without that, it's, they're essentially held back from their potential. So really shining that importance on this fundraising is so important, not only for the financial barrier that stands between the student and excellence, but also to help these students, actually get them motivated and to make sure they feel supported at the end of the day.
I don't think everyone fully understands, like, the funding, whether it's speech, debate, our specialty teacher who teaches work and experience and readiness. You know, there's a group of us that will get the text or the email, help, I need size 10 men's dress shoes, I need a dress for a size small girl. I mean, that never goes to the public, that doesn't go beyond our walls, and I'm sure that happens in all schools, but it happens continuously. And so when Manasa talks about the barriers, it's things we don't even think about, like, go into your closet, I know Jeannie has a lot of fabulous shoes, but so many of our students don't have the bare minimum. They can't get dressed up to go to a job interview or a speech tournament, any of those things. And so that outside funding that Matt was talking about, you know, we got a lot of great Rocket alumni that want to help, but those are the things that people don't even think about as being barriers, that are very real, everyday barriers.
Any other questions or comments? Director McLaughlin?
Just a quick one, I didn't really have one, but something Director Burkmann asked. Let me to this. Thank you for the relationship coaches. And I think what you're doing is great, and I thank you, you, and you for that. But I want to touch on the topic of, you talked about increasing the salary, and I think that's great, I think that's helpful, but I think it's only part of the retention. Can you talk a little bit more about things that I look at in retaining employees as job satisfaction, support, and further opportunities for them?
I'm gonna go back to the words I once said before, grace. Giving staff the grace. Giving staff the grace to do their job, that's what makes them want to stay at JM. So in building that relationship, we meet with our staff once a week. We engage. We bring student support in to talk to them about different things that they see differently in all ways, that they want to see different. So it's a combination of so many different things that we allow to happen within the building of JM. And so when you have student support, teacher support, staff support, you know, it's a dynamic that you just, you are prone to want to go to work every day. Because you know they're coming with it every time to make sure our kids are successful in the building. And so when you have those type of staff in your building, you know, I just love supervising them. I mean, they're funny. We have a lot of humor. We joke a lot over the walkies. We, you know, it's just, it's just a great climate to be in. And I think that just took work to get there. You know, it didn't happen overnight. It just took work. But we never stopped, kept staying on the right target. And just believing in what we feel that's right for our school. And when you do that, great things happen within your building.
And can you talk a little bit about opportunities for them in the future that I want to make sure that they advance themselves if they choose to?
Yeah, for sure. You know, we've had district-wide plans and programs that help encourage folks to pursue further education and things of that nature. It's not always applicable. Most of our folks that come to us right now in these particular roles are young men and women who have recently graduated college, or they're past that point, they're in the second part of their life, they have children in their homes that they need to provide for. So the, the expectation that they would do something beyond it is not, not reasonable for them. So it's structurally changing our expectation of them during the day, something that we work on in regards to their opportunity to lead in our building. Manasseh's on our student council, but we have student school board that comes and meets here with Will and Dr. Pecel and some of you all. When those students came back and had concerns in regards to the way that the relationship coaches interacted with them, Otis, being gracious and humble, but he did a beautiful job of facilitating a conversation between our students and those individuals. In all of the buildings I've worked, far too often, an administrator or a teacher receives feedback from a student and then it's dictated to the individual on how they should change. We're not doing that at JM. It's not how a high functioning family works. So maybe as a specific response to your question, but it is a structural change in how education is supposed to function. It empowers them to lead in their roles. There is no insignificant role, position, person in our building. So when they came back, there was a beautiful dialogue about a student who was frustrated because our two females were frequently in the bathroom. Well, they were also asked by other students, much to a conversation about the school board, where you hear a request to change, but you hear 50% of the other body saying, "Do not change." Those conversations have failed to exist in public education for 100 years. We hide from difficult conversation. Well, these individuals are equipped to do it. So in regards to equipping them then further, we've given them the opportunity to go to things like CPI, which is, I think, a really productive way, we talked about de-escalation strategies, which still happens within a building. 16-year-olds still get mad. But then also, we're allowing them the opportunity and affording them the opportunity to attend things like restorative training practices. Or to go to something that they see that would be advantageous to them in regards to the work that they're doing. Past that point then, we also work with Augsburg, Winona State, University of Minnesota, because one young man who's just turned 22-years-old with us this year came to us from Arkansas. He's a lovely human being, but he's expressed interest in being a social worker. He has a school administrator, Otis has a school administrator. That's our opportunity, not obligation, our opportunity to help him pursue that degree. So then we work with Dakota, who's our career in college readiness center. This is how a community school is supposed to function. You align all your resources. And so Jarvis is going to go, and he's going to be a social worker, or he's going to be a school psychologist, whatever he chooses to pursue. So those are the ways that we're trying to align supports for them. And I met with Jeffrey Boyd, the president over at RCTC. Jeffrey wants to have an intimate role with us, not just with our students, but with our staff, in particular, our staff of color who are successful in our building, and allowing them the opportunity to pursue higher education and not have it interfere with their work. Because they can't not get paid. They have to get paid. So that's, so those are, those are some of the things that come to the top of my head.
Thank you. Director Cook.
Yeah, well, it is so easy to see the passion for the JM community. I'm so glad that the student voice is well represented here. Manasseh, you're doing a fabulous job of sharing that passion for the school community. There were, I just had two things I was hoping I could clarify. One was on the 21st Century program and the clubs that you described, and that that's kind of an evolution from past years. But there's still a lot of tutoring going on. Is there a way to sort of characterize, are the clubs in reward for completing tutoring and catching offer?
No, the clubs are going on in concert with, with the tutoring. You can come to the tutoring anytime you need to. It's Monday through Thursday, starts at 3:30, can run up until 6:00 if the students choose to stay that long. And then if they're not wanting to be, I mean, it's not like it's forced. They just come in and sign in and then take part in the tutoring. If they want to, they can go to the club and sign in there. It's totally up to them. It's just really cool that, you know, they're going, depending on what their needs are, they're staying after school and going to each club that interests them. And that's why it's nice to have that, the funding from the 21st Century side of things, to provide students with those opportunities. So that they have a place to go where they feel like, yes, this is my home. This is where I want to be. And so if we can get that gaming club up and running soon, that would be cool. Or to have, I had a colleague come up with an idea for students to obtain credit and do it very similarly to how we did it in the summer. And so we're trying to come up with a proposal that we'll be turning in soon to get that up and running. But you just, you got to go through the steps to get all that done. So we're excited and we're hopeful.
And then the, one of, well, actually, and thank you, several of you for underscoring the financial barriers to participation in extracurricular activities. I think, I certainly appreciate that that's an important marker of student success and opportunity and something that I think we should do well to keep in mind. So thank you for that. And then Principal Ruzek, you mentioned that there's some early indicators of upward trends. Could you characterize that a little bit, or talk about what are the data points that you're starting to see?
Yeah. So, you know, we, we look at, and I think attendance can be a cripple and sometimes almost cause paralysis because there's such variety to the reason for attendance. So we, we do have indications of growth in attendance. And that's a simple one to just pull from Skyward and to look individually at students who have previously struggled with regards to attendance. Behaviorally, and I'm reluctant always to use that, I know it's semantics, but student struggles, you know, if you look just one year past from what we experienced, we decreased our behavioral, not just our referrals, but the length and duration of our interactions. Those are two really tangible things that we can pull, quick data, you know, Skyward, whatever you want to pull from, right? Then as we start to look at high, high achieving student academics, what we're starting to address more, and we did talk about it just because I know that, again, I apologize for the lateness of our talking, but we have student advisory that started this year. Freshmen and 10th graders are in student advisory. And it works kind of like a study hall right now, only because we didn't have the appropriate amount of time on our behalf to appropriately put it in place. Shane and Mark are co-collaborators on student advisory. This is the specific examples of how we're going to support student growth academically. Each of those teachers then have roughly 25 students who they are responsible for in their homeroom or their advisory. Each month, or whatever they do, they meet every single day, every single week. Then they're identifying struggles with those particular students, whether it's academic, attendance, or struggles with social, emotional wellbeing. So we could go through each of our advisors, not all, because we're not there yet. It's just the creation of this kind of process. Can show students who had historically not participated or engaged in academic advancement. And we have not, we're not at the student portfolio level yet, but we'll get there. Student-led conferences. So those are the small indicators. We haven't taken a standardized exam to show that growth. We haven't, you know, those are the things that will come. And I'm always cautious in regards to that because I don't think MCAs are an appropriate measure for growth in a single student. But as we start to look at the process and practice, those freshmen, as Don, Board Barlow referenced, we're going to watch them for the next four years, not dismissing the other students, but our hyper-focus will be there on them. So the next time I come and share with you, I'll bring specific student examples. And because we went through training today on Edgiclima, I'll have a whole lot of data to support that.
Excellent. Thank you.
So it sounds like there is some interest in ongoing hearing about the progress in these topics. And I think it's fair to say, we will be hearing from you again in the future. I think before we, before we close this agenda item, I think something you said was really interesting, is that we often hide from difficult conversations. And I think it's easy, if you hear your presentation tonight, to feel your enthusiasm and to see all the great things that are happening at JM. But what I appreciate is that you've taken a hard look at the challenges and the difficulties that your students have faced and their barriers. But you are coming out with this enthusiasm and this passion and this love for, for JM. So I, I personally appreciate it. I know board members appreciate all the work that you're doing. And we look forward to hearing more about your progress. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to agenda item 8.01, Grading for Learning Update. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I'll just say, when we talk about the power of youth voice and youth leadership, I agree. I just will share, I just got an email from one of our high school students literally 10 minutes ago. Hey, Mr. Pecel, what do you think is the probability we'll have a snow and ice day tomorrow? I just, I just want to know if I'll have time for homework tomorrow, or if I have to do it tonight. That is the future, right there. Like, you know, carefully portioning their time.
I'm really glad that he recognized that it was you who made that decision and not the school board.
Not you. Chair Nathan and Directors of the Board, as you know, a number of years ago in Rochester, we made some changes in the grading procedures that we utilized in the district. It went under the heading Grading for Learning. This was an initiative that I know you as board members have heard much about. It certainly was something that I've heard about as I joined the school district. One of the first things I asked our chief academic officer, Dr. Agbamu, to take on, as she assumed her role with us this summer, was to engage in an inquiry into how that's going and some of what we're seeing. And so a working group has completed some important work. They have made a recommendation to me. The board and those who are also listening are going to get an update on that work. I will then be making some decisions about what I think from the recommendation is aligned with our strategic plan and the best path forward. We will then take that out for broader feedback among teachers and others in the district. And I look forward to definitely having an enhancement of our grading processes in this school year. And so this is not an item for board action, but it's an item certainly to keep you updated. It's my understanding that the board also did not take previous action on the change to Grading for Learning. And so I don't anticipate that this will be an item for board action. However, it is certainly an item on which I really welcome board advice, and we want to keep you very updated because we know you hear about this. So tonight really is a great update on some really good process work. And I'll let Dr. Agbamu kind of tee it off. And I know we have our two intrepid co-chairs of the group that are going to give you an overview of the work that we did.
Good evening, Chair of the Board, Superintendent Pecel, Directors of the Board. I'm going to pass the button to Connie and Jill to share the process.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having us. Again, greetings to you all, new Director Nathan, Superintendent Directors. My name is Connie Gretschard. I'm the Director of Student Services. I'm here with my colleague Jill Dunn.
I am the Coordinator of Chair's Supports.
And as Dr. Agbamu just said, we were assigned as neutral facilitators.
Volunteer.
To facilitate the grading work group. And we are thankful for the opportunity to present to you today the results of our meetings and the progress made so far, along with the recommendations.
So first, a little bit of a history. In 2016, the initial work group was convened to discuss shared beliefs and to begin developing grading practices around those shared beliefs. Those were presented to the then superintendent and to the cabinet members in 2017, with pilot implementation beginning in 2018. District-wide implementation started in 2019 and then culminated with that fall implementation in 2020.
With the, as Superintendent Pecel just said, with the new strategic plan moving forward this fall, grading practices needed to be reviewed for alignment and further consideration. And that is how the work group was formed. It consisted of administrators, staff, which included a counselor and an ESP as well as teachers, and students, who then met four times to consider current grading practices and make some recommendations for enhancements.
Due to the somewhat sensitive nature of the topic and the need for transparency about the purpose for participation, we utilize the spectrum of public participation from the International Association for Public Participation, also known as IAP2. And we use that to communicate the intent of our meetings. So this spectrum, you'll see ranges all the way from inform on the left over to empower on the right. And it shares really the goals and the objectives of the stakeholder participants, and the agencies then promise to those stakeholders. So oftentimes what happens is when groups are formed, people misinterpret the purpose as being empowered. And so we wanted to make sure that we were clear about the purpose of our meetings and why, why we sought the members why, why we sought the members to be involved. So we worked at the involve level. And at the start of each meeting, we called attention to the group's scope of influence. Participants were invited to share their concerns and aspirations and about the grading practices. And then, as facilitators, Connie and I worked to make sure that those thoughts were directly reflected in any of the recommendations for the enhancement. And that's what brings us here today.
The next slide, just want to point out, there was a guiding principle, and it's noted here, and it was selected based on the MDE-K12 Academic Standards for Statewide Learning Expectations in Our Public Schools. And the guiding principle is noted there and was used to center our work each and every time we met and to minimize personal beliefs and opinions at each of the grading sessions.
The original target group, size of 24, allowed for us to really, to then divide those group, that large group into two small groups. Those two groups had a balance of various roles and professions that were serving on the large group. Each session, we focused on one or two of the big ideas from the three sample sets of practices. And groups then shared their thoughts and ideas around the practices. An initial vote was taken as to which, which was their preference. If alternates were offered, then we had a discussion and we re-voted. And we really continued to just repeat that process until we finally reached consensus by simple majority.
And after those then-three meeting sessions, small group, we moved to the large group. We brought both groups back together for a final meeting. And that consisted of presenting the two separate sets of recommendations that came forward from each group. The large group then underwent a very similar process to the, to how they participated in small groups for determining which final set of recommendations to bring forth. And in that last meeting, though, one of the differences was that stake, or the staff and participants voted anonymously, which was different than, than voting in front of their peers and their colleagues in the small group sessions. Then, simple majority again was met. The opportunity to be able to offer up an alternate recommendation was definitely there. But they were able to, we were able to gain a simple majority quite quickly in that final group session.
So as a result of the work, the members proposed the following sets of ideas and recommendations for grading enhancements at RPS. So the first practice is that classroom activities, not considered summative assessment, may be included in the overall grade and will account for no more than 10% of the total grade. Activities included in the grade must link directly to classroom learning targets. And you'll note the difference between the recommendation and the original practice allows for some inclusion of formative practice activities in the grade. Practice two, reassessment will be allowed in part or in whole with demonstrated relearning. And in this recommendation, the group suggested adding that additional step of relearning prior to allowing reassessment to occur. Practice three, this big idea is relatively unchanged. Non-academic factors are not counted within the summative grade. However, the group wants to make sure that they have expressed the desire to have an alternative way to measure and document those academic behaviors such as attendance, participation, preparation, studying behaviors, and other behaviors that are impactful to academics but are not necessarily included in the overall grade. And then, the fourth practice is an overall deviation from the original set of practices. And it reads, "Students will turn in formative assessments prior to the summative assessment or reassessment." Dr. Agbamu, did they get the document, the handout? Is a side-by-side potentially document?
We will post this on Board Docs. It's literally hot off the presses, so you can, I think we have some copies for other folks.
So there is a document being handed to you that is a comparison of the current practices with the recommendations. You want to just take a minute to look at that. But you'll see primarily that there is a clear shift from the original with the new recommendations for work groups created.
Were there any extra of those copies that were?
Yep.
Yeah. They're, they're good multitaskers. You can keep going and then they'll.
Just wanted to now bring your attention to some discussions that happened during sessions around each of the big ideas that you see listed there, one through four. Several topics of thoughts continue to come up, and so they are noted here. The group clearly expressed a desire for some shared understanding of grading purposes and what grades represent. The group also repeatedly talked about needing consistency within content areas around grading application practices, and also voiced desire for continued teacher autonomy in determining the application of grading practices. And finally, on this slide, you'll note, multiple conversations were had around student behavior and how it is relative, or if it is relative to a grade.
Additionally, our students that attended as our, as our group members were wonderful in being not only able to express their own concerns, but also the concerns of their peers. And so, a couple of those concerns that were expressed regarded the current practices for administering summative assessments. And then, they also expressed a desire for some kind of acknowledgement or credit for the work that they do in terms of formative practice activities. Finally, the group recognized the need for ongoing professional development related to grading practices, beliefs, and implementation.
And that really brings us to our conclusion here. Just, we, now we've talked all about our grading work group recommendations. We presented the detailed summary now to you and a much more detailed summary to Superintendent Pekel. Moving forward, as continued work on the strategic plan develops, there is definite clear alignment to the deeper learning work group that is already assembled as part of the strategic plan. And that group will continue to look at the group recommendations and some of the issues that have been raised throughout this discussion. And the work now moves on to the superintendent to obtain other perspectives on the recommendations and, and to make final recommendations. We definitely want to acknowledge the fact that we had fantastic representation. The group members voluntarily gave up their time. We did feed them a little bit of dinner, which was very important to all of them. They're so very talented, and they showed up each session ready to engage in thoughtful, student-centered discussions around grading practices. And at this time, we would address any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Dr. Marvin?
This is very clear, thank you. My question is, under the recommendation, students will turn in formative assessments prior to the summative assessment or reassessment. Does that mean that if there are questions a student needs to answer, some sort of, whether it's homework or schoolwork, they can't do the formative assessment until after the summative assessment is submitted?
No, I think it's the opposite.
They can't do this, they have to turn in proof that they've done some work before they can take.
If, if it's included, anything that, primarily, it would be that 10% that would be included in the grade. The, the work group was looking for that to be submitted prior to being able to.
So when kids are saying they want credit for completion, that's kind of the 10% there. But if I'm this kid and I'm thinking, I got this, I don't need to do this other work before I take the test, do I have to show I've done something before I take the test or not?
In, in, there are kind of two different things. And there was clarity that the group also needed, and that was the recommendation of, or the idea behind some clarity around what actually is summative and what's formative? Because.
And I just mixed them up too.
Exactly. So they're kind of both. It's kind of both and. If you're doing formative assessment, the conversation was around, I don't want to just keep giving you formative assessments or a test to, versus you showing us that you've learned something, or that we spent some time together and you can demonstrate some relearning, so then I can give you another exemplar, exemplar to follow to be able to test it again versus just continued testing-taking and no practice in between.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
First of all, thank you both for your leadership, and thank you FA for putting this in process. I'm, I'm very enthused about working with you on the next steps. I think your presentation also highlights something that is an undervalued reality in not just our school district, but many, which is that process matters. Like, process really matters a lot. So I'm just curious, I haven't had a chance to ask either of you this, how did you come up with this process? I mean, did, did you, I know Dr. Agbamu shared with me and others that schematic for community engagement, which I'd never seen before, which I think is very powerful. Because you're right, a lot of times out of the gate, a group doesn't really know where their authority lies, or the responsibility lies, because people are going to blame me, not them, you know, and that's appropriate. So how did you come up with the process that you followed for these groups? And you don't have to make it sound hyper-strategic if it wasn't, but what was the, what was the logic behind how you guided this? What, what could have frankly, definitely blown up into a very, you know, acrimonious discussion?
Maybe I can take that for them. Several times, we had several pre-planning meetings, and we, which we agreed and disagreed. And, I mean, it was, we called it strategic planning meeting. And so, it was made, not just the three of us, but other members of the team. And so, it was purposefully planned. And I guess, having engaged staff and public in some of this discussion, it was very clear that we had everything to the last minute covered. And so, we, we role-played, and we were very careful and mindful to give the group the voice, however, create some guide wheels around it. And there was, I'll say, there's a reading, to my madness, in picking the two of them to facilitate this, because I have on my team people who have been actively involved in this from 2016. And so, there's a lot of raw emotions attached to it. They were part of the planning, but we wanted to take every bias out and really get an honest perspective. So I said, you know what, Connie? It's going to be the two of you. Now, we're going to practice this, and we're going to do this, and we're going to plan together. And the intent is to come up with an unbiased perspective. And we went as far as agreeing that the first meeting, we are going to be there. And so, we welcomed them in this space. And subsequent meetings, I said to the other members, stay away, no bias here. We don't want you there, unusually influencing anything, which they understood, and I stayed away too. And then, the final meeting, I came back, actually, I was on vacation in Florida. She hooked me up in, and I thanked them very much for participating and hope they enjoyed the dinner we served them. And so, it was intentional, it was purposeful, it was a collective team, members of my team, Peter, Rock, Peter, Dobbs, Heather, everybody, they were there. But when it came to the execution, we removed every bias, because we wanted the unfiltered truth without, oh, we've done this before, why are we changing this? We didn't want that. And, and like you said, we decided to use the spectrum of public participation, because when you call this group together, if you don't set those parameters and continue to remind them, they automatically go to the empowerment. We're empowered to make decisions, and we knew this wasn't a decision-making group. And so, consistently, every single day, we reminded them, now remember where, what your role is now. And, and it was all part of the, the pre-meetings that we had, it was always showing up. And if people are attempting to derail, Connie and Jill will bring them back. Remember this again?
That's great, thank you.
So, anybody else? Go ahead.
I don't even, I don't even know really how to ask this, but I'm just like a visual person. The first thing I want to say is like, I appreciate that the, the students acknowledge, like, they need a reinforcer for doing a thing. So like, why would I do homework if you're not going to give me some type of credit, whether it's like actual class credit or something else? But I guess I'm also wondering too, I think pulled from, again, some of their feedback is, is there a way, without making this so much harder for other people, to like, make a visual of the workflow change for both students and educators in this process? So like, if before it was, the students were doing like 90%, just busy, busy work, right, as they, they called it, and like, this part is what they really need to be able to pass, like standardized, you know, statewide exams. Versus now, it's maybe opposite of that, but like, how much are like educators, like, grading, if they're not really grading that much anymore? Like, is this going to shift and put a lot of undue work on any one of the groups in this process if we shift to what these recommendations are? Because I think as a student, if I were in the school in the middle of this shift, I'd be like, well, maybe I went from doing a ton of homework to hardly anything or nothing, or maybe I chose not to because I knew it wasn't going to be graded, to now, like, there is this expectation of I will be going back to spending like two or three hours a night doing homework after band practice or football games or whatever. So that they also have like a, a recognition of expectation, but also so the educators are well aware, like, now if we're doing this, this will mean that you have to spend X amount of time doing these things or fitting it into your schedule somehow. I don't know if that's possible to do, but I would need that visual, or I would want that if I was in either group, like, how much, how much more am I going to get burdened or unburdened by a shift in these recommendations over time? If that makes sense?
I think some of that comes, one of the things that was unveiled in our conversations is that there's a lot of differences in the application of the current big ideas. And so, what that looks like in one classroom could be very different than what that looks like in a different classroom. So we have some staff members who are under the assumption, or whether it's right or wrong, but it's how they're operating, that summative assessment means a test.
Yeah.
And we have other staff members who are working on, you know, a summative assessment is really you showing me that you understand the concepts. And so, that could be a project, or a paper, or it could be a group activity, but however it is, it's just thoughtful and purposeful. And so, I think when you think about kind of the workload there, already there's varying levels of what that workload already looks like across the district. So I think that's where we said, you know, when the group really recognizes the need for ongoing professional development, that's one of the key areas, is, is what does that implementation look like and what does that mean in the classroom? So that we're seeing some of that consistency, that a chemistry classroom at Century looks the same as this chemistry classroom.
Right.
In terms of requirements and formative, summative assessment activities as the one at JM and at Mayo.
I'll just say, Dr. Garcia, I love the idea of the graphic and the visual, and so I hadn't thought about that. So it's something as we get to the communication phase, the, the next phase, I love that idea. It's not my forte, but I know a good graphic when I see it.
So like, data on a graph of some kind, like, I just, I need that.
Dr. Orkin?
Yeah, Dr. Garcia, I'm really glad you went first, because you were thinking some of the same things that I was thinking, that there has been some tension between students who won't do homework or don't think they need to do it because it doesn't count versus, well, you know, how do I assess the student if they're not doing their homework? So is it a question of it just being done? Or does the teacher or the educator actually able to look at that homework that has been completed to figure out where the student is and what they know and don't know? And I know that's impossible when you've got 160 students, it just doesn't work. So I'm wondering if there will ever be any data to demonstrate any correlation between those who did the homework and their summative grades, and those who did not do the homework and their summative grade, summative grade. And that's the first piece of it. And then, I was thinking back to the days of outcome-based education, which was, how many times do they get to retake the test? And if a teacher has to produce a different test every single time, they go crazy, and rightly so. And I'm sure that this is really much beyond the scope of this, this conversation tonight, but I think it's something maybe to think about. And maybe there already are and they haven't.
All of those things were said.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Dr. Marla?
More of an observation, under summary of discussion topics, I appreciated the fact that the statement was presented, shared understanding of grading purpose and what a grade represents. That's so important, because I think sometimes the, the goal for some students may be, and I am of the generation of where, well, what's your grade? What's your grade? Not, what did you learn? What did you learn? But, you know, what's your grade? And, and so, I've always been a proponent of grading for learning. I see the value of it. I appreciate the work that you guys have put forth, and I'm looking forward, Superintendent Pekel, to your recommendations.
Dr. Mike Bachman?
I just have some real basics, just to make sure that we're looking at all of this, because I wasn't on the board when Grading for Learning started, so kind of just basics. Is it just for secondary, just for high school? Or does middle school as well?
And elementary.
And elementary, okay, that was good. I'm glad I asked. And then, all content areas, and does it include special education areas as well?
Grading for Learning? Yes.
Okay, all content?
All content, all special education.
Because special, it allows for modification. And so, this is broad-based enough for those modifications to happen.
I'm glad I asked, thank you.
Dr. Garcia?
Yeah, this is, I think, more anecdotal, but to kind of tie that, what both Julie and Don were saying, like, I was the student in my senior high school math class, that because the teacher put in their syllabus, like, what every single piece of everything he was going to ask us to do was in the weighted part of the grade, that I figured out I could do zero homework, and as long as I aced, like, you know, this test, this test, this test, and got an A on the final, I would pass the class and sometimes could still get an A. And so, I guess, in my sense, it's like, I knew the information. I didn't have to do any of the homework to get an A on the test. And I don't think it was exactly what an educator would be looking for either, right? Like, because he used to get so mad at me, like, Perse, where is your stuff? And I'm like, I don't need to do that in order to ace your class. And I think that that, for him, was, like, well, now I have to recalibrate what I'm asking people to do in my classroom, because if you can pass or even ace the course without you. without doing some of the work, like what does, what does that mean? And so like, he wasn't grading to gauge my learning because I had already learned or knew the information. And so how can we make it more meaningful, not just to the educators who are teaching the content, but to the people who are supposed to be learning that information? And flexing for those students who maybe need a reassessment or those who are like, I'm already past this, but this is the class that I'm enrolled in. Like, what else can be added on or given to them to like extend their ability to learn past whatever is asked of them on the syllabus? But that's going to be meaningful to them and their educational career.
One more quick anecdote that's sort of the reverse of yours. I knew a student who had a semester class and the first quarter of that semester class got a C because not enough homework was turned in. And I'm glad, I'm glad I didn't know about this until graduation, where graduation was over. The second quarter, it was an F because no homework was done. But the, there was an A on the final exam. But, so that's why I'm asking, what is, is there any correlation? Maybe it's too hard because their students are so individual between the amount, the kind of homework that students are, are being given and what they can show for, for their learning.
Right. My schedule was packed. And so I can imagine like the student that we just heard from, like, I did band, inquire, speech and debate, all the things. And so I was like, we, our school let out at 2:20. I was busy until sometimes 10 o'clock at night. And if it was a football game, midnight. And so I was like, there are just days that I, I cannot do all of this work. And so I would pick and choose the things that I could pull out. And so for expecting, I think as Director Cook was sort of, you know, talking about before, is like these extracurricular opportunities, if we're also going to, as a society, require them to do those things in order to be successful, whether they move on to college or some other pathway, that we also have to be real about what we're asking them to do in the classroom and, and what the, the summative and formative assessments mean, both to them and to how successful they're going to be in the future. Because a C doesn't mean they don't understand, nor does an F clearly, or an A.
Student well-being.
Yeah, yeah.
Chair Nathan's giving me a discussion, so I'll keep this quick. The process, as Dr. Pecel said, that's awesome. And I love that you let people know ahead of time how decisions were going to be made. Next steps, are you going to have the discussion or have you had the discussion about what motivates kids to want to learn? It just seems to me that we teach them, from the time they come into elementary school, we teach them that you work for the grade. You do the work because you get a grade. And, and that maybe if we stopped doing that in elementary school, they wouldn't go into secondary school with, I need the grade and not, you know, I think we want to believe that kids are just internally motivated. And I think they are when they're little, that they love learning new stuff and exploring. And then somehow that gets lost. So I don't know if that's going to be part of your discussion or not. And if it is, can you get back real quick with an answer?
Well, I'm glad to give you the stink eye for that, Director Marvin, because that was exactly what I was going to ask, is I feel like we're making a lot of assumptions about students. We're, we have our own personal information. We had, how many students were in the group? Two? We know the range of student experiences is wide. Is there anything from the Panorama data or anything that helps us to figure out if what we're assuming about student behavior and motivations is tied in with what the adults are interpreting?
I would say Chair Nathan and Directors, Dr. Marvin, that, the good news is there's a ton of research on that. And one of the best books which maybe we want to read as a board is Why Students Hate School. And I actually-
Maybe we should hand it out.
Yeah. I wrote a book that, that we distributed that was on five factors, relationships, effort, aspirations, cognition, and heart. That doesn't get at the content of the curriculum. Are we teaching what is engaging? I think there is, there's some data in Panorama that is useful to look at, and we'll be sharing that with the board, around some social emotional competencies and student perception of teaching. It doesn't take us really to the heart of this issue, but this is central to the work we're doing on deeper learning. The most important answer to this is that work on deeper learning, which is learning that it's a combination of three things. Mastery, which of course is grading is aiming for, but also identity and creativity. And so I think that's our big answer to this question. In the meantime, as board members have heard, we have an issue. And I think what this working group came back, and in addition to these very specific recommendations that have given me a lot to think about as I think about next steps, the working groups also said, we need to change. They didn't come back and say the status quo is good. And that was not off the table. They could have come back and said, no, actually, this is fine, full speed ahead. They resoundingly said significant change is needed. And so we, I think, clearly have had some very careful facilitated discussion that has not only said change is needed, but that has articulated some broad directions for that change, which I think, I, I'm very confident we will build on. What you will see next from me will not be a radical departure from what these groups have recommended. I think we need to get much clearer and we need to see this as the beginning, not the end of a journey. I remember when I was in St. Paul schools and we were having a passionate debate about changing weighted honor points. So a point that a kid got for taking AP or third year orchestra or whatever. And that, talk about blood and guts. And there was a teacher in the auditorium who stood up and said, this is all very good that we're debating weighted honor points. We have never had a discussion in this particular school, which was a good school, about what constitutes an A and a B and a C. And so we're passionately debating whether third year orchestra should get a weighted honor point or AP. And we haven't actually defined the core. So I see this as an important step that our teachers in particular told us we need to address. And it's just going to be the beginning of a journey. And I think, Dr. Marvin, your point about student psychology and motivation is central. And I think, Dr. Garcia, your point about understanding students' broader existences is also really essential. The, I can't get my homework done because I'm doing all these other valuable things you want me to do. So this is complex stuff. And I think in the spirit of not making the perfect the enemy of the good, my hope and really one of Dr. Akbamu's goals for the year of her leadership of our academic work is by the end of this school year to have the challenges in our current approach to grading addressed, understanding that, I thought it was very interesting that the group said, we need to do a lot of professional development around this. We need to do a lot of collaboration. We're talking about developing young minds, asking them to understand why Dr. Marvin's grade is fundamentally different than Dr. Pecel's when they had her English class right before my social studies class and we aren't on the same page. That is an unreasonable expectation to ask students to constructively thread that needle. That would probably be, Dr. Marvin's nice and Dr. Pecel's mean, but we need to get that-
Dr. Pecel's doing it wrong.
Right. But, so, to be continued. And my strong hope and confidence is that we can address these issues this school year.
And we're addressing them and trying to come up with solutions, but to be implemented...
That's a really important question that I'm not sure about. What, I would like to have the solutions this school year. Will we implement for next year? The, there's a lot of rationale for that, but I think we also heard from the groups, the need for professional development. And so there could be, this is not a decision, there could be, we implement the following year and we spend next year getting real clarity through professional development and school improvement discussions on what this new system is, but we actually take a year to ground everyone in it before we actually switch. I say that reluctantly because I don't, I don't like to wait, but better to do it really well than to do it and have what it sounds like you heard a lot about, people kind of making it up in different ways. I'm, I think we're all believers in teacher autonomy, but when we ask kids to interpret very diverse signals of what's good enough, we're hampering the learning that, that's there. So important question of when. But I think we can get the strategy figured out this year.
Can I make a suggestion about that? I sort of see the first topic of the discussion topic as bigger and broader and a bigger discussion than the others.
Yeah, that's helpful.
And, and maybe some of the others could be done and ready to go this year, but not the bigger picture.
Yeah, that's helpful.
I think the last, the last point, I want to make sure that the future work includes is the parent communication and engagement. I think we, we talk about assumptions and understanding. I know there was some real intentionality that curriculum instruction put in that they, they were trying to put together a communication for parents and they did. But then there was the difference in what they heard from their students. It was the difference in what they heard from other parents, what they heard, the, the inconsistencies across buildings. So we have, I think, be really intentional with that if we don't want our message, you know, misunderstood or derailed.
As it happens, this is the subject on which my wife wrote her doctoral dissertation. So I hear some strong opinions of it at home. And one of the biggest gaps is the parent piece. That well-intentioned grading reform efforts have struggled mightily, as we are, with the educator perspective. They often haven't necessarily engaged the student perspective. So wonderful you did that in an initial way. But then the parent perspective is way left, parent and other caregivers. And in the end, they are in some ways the most important consumers of that grade for certain purposes. So yes, we need to make sure that, that, that parent and caregiver perspective is prominent as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your work and for your presentation.
I need a note about that about 14 minutes ago.
All right. Next item on the agenda is 9.01, December 1st, 2022, Policy Committee Meeting Recommendations. This is the second reading of the policies. Does anybody have any questions or issues on the policies that were first briefed on December 13th? Hearing none. We'll move on to Agenda Item 9.02, Approval of Additional School Resource Officer, Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask our Chief Administrative Officer, John Carlson, to come up and brief the board on this request for action. And I'm going to say nothing else.
Very good. Well, thank you. I was almost going to say Chair Marvin because that's what your title and your name takes.
We've also switched identities. So, yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to bring this administrative item to you tonight. The reason this is coming forward to you is because we have grown in our number of secondary comprehensive schools. At the start of this year, we've gone from six comprehensive secondary schools to seven. So we've grown our, our footprint by 17% in those categories of buildings. And we are realizing that it would be helpful to have additional SRO help to cover the additional building. And so the, the staff in the school support department has been very thoughtful about how they would best do that, should they be allowed to get a sixth School Resource Officer. What we need to do in order to amend this contract, because it says that we will have five School Resource Officers, so if we are to add a sixth, we actually need to formally amend the contract. And we felt that since this contract is one of significant concern for the board, that we wanted to bring it here rather than going out on a limb and modifying it directly with the city as the administration. So what we're asking for is approval to increase the School Resource Officer support to proportionally matches the increase in our secondary school buildings this year. This would be through June 30th. And of course, as usual, you have the option to amend or change or let go of the contract annually.
So before I ask for board member questions and comments, I'd just like to remind board members, this is a preparation for action item, and it's scheduled for action at the January 17th regular meeting. So tonight's your chance to ask questions and get clarification. Director Workman. Could you give us some dollar amounts as to what the additional SRO officer will cost us through June 30th?
Yes. Roughly, it should cost us about $30,000 to cover the six months. It's about $5,000 per month per School Resource Officer.
And that's our half?
That's our half, yes.
Maybe say just a little bit more about that. How does that?
Yeah. So we have a funding source called the Safe Schools Levy, and we have a little bit of a fund balance built up there. And so we would be able to sustain this sixth Resource Officer without digging into the general fund if we don't change any of our other funding for at least the next two to three years. So the funding is available if we were to choose to use it this way.
And the city of Rochester, through the Rochester Police Department, covers the other half of the cost. And it's my understanding that they will be, the city will be amenable to this proposal if it reflects the wishes of the board.
Director Garcia.
I also just had a couple of comments in the Google Doc that Lori sent out. And of the two, I guess the second one is, can you just speak to, like, simply separate from like RPD trying to balance the staffing of middle schools, can we justify or describe why there would, one would be necessary in the fourth middle school? Like, is there data or documentation that suggests that there's an increase in behavioral issues? Or is it just to like, make equal, I suppose, what services we provide across the district?
That one I would ask for maybe some support from the superintendent or our friends from the school support department if they'd like to make any comments on that.
Yeah, I certainly would invite Chief of Schools Jackie Peterson to jump in. And we have got Julie Claman and Chris Lingback there too. In short, Dr. Garcia, it's a key question. We, there just aren't enough people to go around to have the SROs in the buildings as often as we would like them in our secondary schools. And the addition of Dakota in particular, which is further out geographically and is a large school, has been the primary reason. And so this would allow us to have them in, not just Dakota, that all the schools would benefit from this. It's really coming down to not having the officer there when something might occur because we're short proportionally based upon the, the added students.
And are there things that are occurring that we have not had an officer there for?
Yes. Yes. Do you want to add?
I would just say, not related to discipline data or occurrences, but the, the coverage, having, having someone there preventatively and, you know, as a presence. I think if you ask John Adams and Dakota about, or I'm sorry, Willow Creek and Dakota about the presence of Officer Al Arzola and the positive presence he has there, the proactive presence he has there, the presentations he does on social media and, and other relevant topics for middle school students, they need more of that. They're, they would love to, we would love to have enough, I don't want to say coverage, but people so that we feel adequately served in each of our secondary buildings. The other benefit is that our ALC will have more coverage than they've had in the past. Our high schools, our SROs are spread thin trying to cover ALC.
And maybe I can be a little more specific, Dr. Garcia, in response to your question. The specific things that persuaded me that this was a reasonable increase in the strategy the board has outlined are, as you know, our SROs also frequently provide support to schools by going to homes to check out students in distress and taking students to emergency rooms and providing that support. There have been several instances this year in which we didn't have an SRO in the building when that happened. And so we, we handle it and they go across town. But when they're there, those services are much more seamlessly provided in addition to, as Jackie mentions, the sort of the positive benefits to it. But this is a very modest increase in the support. And it does not in any way commit the board to any departure in the very thoughtful strategy that you've outlined for School Resource Officers. And as John mentioned, you will still have the opportunity and expectation of deciding on the contract in the spring, in the spring.
Director McLaughlin.
Just one comment that I think most of us, if not all of us, recognize, this is the topic that led to a lot of community consternation about School Resource Officers in general. So I just want to point out that elephant in the room. But also, Mr. Carlson, recognizing that we're in January and that this is through the end of the year, have you had conversations with the city to know how quickly this could be on board and be effective with a new SRO and, and have an impact so that we're doing this right?
Sure. My understanding is that they possibly have a solution ready to go pretty quickly, but they wanted to hear formally that the school board is willing to amend the contract before they put the process in place on their end to commit their-
And I guess I say that, listening to what Ms. Peterson was talking about, that we can't duplicate Officer Arzola. You know, we can't replicate him or 3D print him or whatever. Can we have somebody on board that's, you know, equally effective this quickly?
Yes. I, I do believe there is a solution. And again, that the, the city wanted to hear from us first before they act on it.
Okay. Thank you. Director Cook.
Yeah, thank you. So I, first, thanks for bringing this to the board. And-
So I, first, thanks for bringing this to the board and because it was so heavily negotiated and considered by the board. And I, the way that I was understanding this relative to the agreement that was contemplated last June and how the officers would be situated was that, at least what was described in that draft, was that there would be one officer splitting time between Century and Kellogg and another one between JM and Dakota, and one would be splitting time between the other two middle schools. So all the middle schools were covered, was my understanding. And so I'm, I don't know what has changed in the last six months that has meant that there hasn't been enough coverage. It sounds like, the way I'm hearing it now, is in particular at Kellogg and at Dakota.
And if you, if we look at the the data, the SRO at Century High School is rarely able to spend as much time at Kellogg as we would have hoped because of how busy they are. And so, well, the schedule might look like there's some, an equal division of time there just cannot be because of the needs that are occurring at at the high school.
Are those needs different, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are those needs this year at Century, for example, different than what was anticipated from previous years?
We have, if they have the exact data to show you, but yes, anecdotally, yes. It is a busier place with with challenges that we're finding. We need support there, preventative support.
Okay.
Director Workman. Yeah, so I think the the other piece of this that's important is ALC and Phoenix. And those officers, I don't know if there was a specific officer who was drawn into those two schools from somewhere else or.
Phoenix Academy has its own SRO. ALC has been served by high school SROs splitting time and going to the ALC.
And their time is already pretty short.
It's precious at the high school.
Yep, okay, thank you.
I just want to acknowledge my colleagues in the back of the room, Chris Ling and Julie Claman, who waited just in case you have questions, and so I encourage you to come up if there's anything you want to add. We waited all this time.
Director Barlow.
Just to be clear, then, if there is an additional SRO provided through the month of June, will that in any way affect the uptick that we're experiencing at Century? I only ask that because the use of the term proportionate increase, you know, suggesting, well, the opening of an additional middle school has resulted in the need for placement, yet it seems like the placement of SRO should be where the needs may be. So are we, why aren't we thinking reallocating existing SROs to Century, for instance? It's just a.
I think, maybe I can add, I'm going to be really careful here because we're on TV talking about a specific school. The strat, the issues at Century are much broader than involves an SRO, and we have a comprehensive strategy in place there, working with school leadership. We've just moved an additional full-time administrator there. We have got staff from the Office of Academics deeply engaged in addressing some real concerns we have with some providing support to students with disabilities there, and so we're leaning in. The SRO at Century is is very fully occupied there and therefore not being able to provide support elsewhere. And so certainly right now, I think we have the, because SROs are not the first line of addressing any of these issues, as you well know and as the board has charged. I think we have the level of support we need at Century right now. This this increase proportionally would help us address Kellogg and Dakota in particular, as Director Cook was just pointing out.
And so the idea is the high schools will have a full-time person, and we'll free up the Century SRO from having to cover.
And if I may, my only point was, and I think the superintendent captured it well, is maybe what we're seeing an increase of is not necessarily a SRO issue that can be solved simply by the placement of or the increase of, but it may very well be indicative of some other areas that seemingly are being addressed and.
That was absolutely my hesitation in answering you, and we do have a very comprehensive plan that will work. Additional personnel at Century.
Director McLaughlin.
I had kind of thought through this, kind of from a different perspective, that the idea that if we're going to provide more coverage to ALC, and it related to a question I had asked Mr. Carlson by email, is that if we want to do that fairly, that each high school SRO should participate in that, but the Century one can't because they're assigned to Kellogg. So that they're already being polled with two schools, and that adding another, you know, perhaps a day into their schedule, they only work five days a week. So it seemed out of fairness to, because we opened Dakota, and the alignment doesn't fit with the Century SRO covering ALC, that we need to reconfigure this so that there's fair coverage of ALC by.
Or not, a sixth SRO, not to decide where it goes. I'm guessing.
No, no. That's.
My point is, that's not something the school board does. You guys and the police department determine that. So all we have to, all we can decide is yes to a sixth one or not. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from?
I actually have a question about that, though, because I think it is in the contract of.
Correct. Exactly where they are.
So we might need to revisit that language as well.
That is correct. That would be the language we'd want to amend as well, so.
But it would be your, it would, you'd bring it to us as a recommendation in the change of the contract language of what the contract says as to where they are assigned.
Yes, I think if we agreed or if this resolution passed, we'd probably do our busy work with the city administration, and we'd probably just run it through consent at that point with the red line.
Right, on the 17th. Okay. Is that amenable to board members? Any other comments or questions? Director Cook.
One other thing, you mentioned the Safe Schools Levy, and just from memory, I'm thinking that the Safe Schools Levy can also be spent on on other things besides School Resource Officers, I think, school psychologists and social workers. Is that, is that accurate?
There is a whole laundry list of things. Our focus is School Resource Officers, our district coordinator of security, and then the, what do we call them now, relationship coaches in our our buildings.
Thank you.
But could they not be used for, I think, what Director Barlow was suggesting, is, or have we gotten to the point where all of the first, second, you know, tertiary things that we would put in place are maxed out and the SRO is the thing that we need? Or are there other things that we could be doing that don't require additional law enforcement presence in the school?
My recommendation would be not this year, because there are certain critical functions that SROs are playing, as the board has mapped it out in the revised contract that you approved. I think beyond this year, that's absolutely something we should be constantly looking at. As we look next year at the reallocation of all our funding streams, that should apply to the Safe Schools Levy as well, compensatory education, general fund, Title I, achievement and integration. Next year is the work of deciding how funding should be allocated in RPS to drive the plan. I think that would be a very good process in which to consider how we fund safety and security in our schools. And so that's something that I think should, because there's many moving parts to it, it's something that we'll want to consider as part of that broader funding redesign. And I think it's a very good use, because as you point out, there are a lot of other things that levy could be utilized for. I will also say that levy is not gigantic and it's not sufficient many years out to do all the things that we, I know, are committed to do around safety. As John said, we do have a bit of a fund balance in that levy right now, so we would be fine with this modest increase. We do need to think hard about funding safe and inclusive and equitable schools going forward with a sustainable funding source. And this levy would not be sufficient to do all the things that we know we need to do. And so we're going to need to spend some general fund dollars on this work at a higher level than we're doing right now. I don't think that's going to be gigantically higher, but I think we're going to have to allocate, and I'm not, I'm taking your point, Dr. Garcia, about other other strategies that promote safety in our schools that could be resourced from those funds.
Is that a conversation that would happen during the code design process?
The, it'll happen through the DISC group next year around funding streams, for sure.
But what about that, the third piece that grew out of our SRO work with the the code design?
That, that is finished, and it is going to be, we will be sharing the update with you on that. And it it very much, it didn't get into the issues around, like, funding and means. It has, it actually turned out to be much more about the quality of education we're providing than behavior, and in some very interesting ways, I look forward to briefing you about.
Okay. Yes, Director McLaughlin.
Director Pecel, I have a follow-up to what you were talking about, and I think I can articulate this, that will we have enough information about the funding before we revisit the contract? I think it's in April, like, April 11th.
We're okay for this year and next year. Am I correct, John, from the, with the funding, the current package of what we're funding with SROs through the end of the following school year?
At least, yes. I was thinking the runway could support this for about two and a half years.
So I think we would, we wouldn't need to make the decision for financial reasons this spring, when you make your decision about the contract. A year from now, when we're, hopefully, I think we're all committed to redesigning our funding model broadly, then we would need to do it, and I think that'd be the right time to do it, because then we can look and say, what are the critical functions we need to support tied to school safety, and how do we have a reliable funding strategy for them, including but not limited to SROs, should the board continue to want to have SROs working in our schools?
Did that cover everyone's questions? I think so. All right, then we'll look forward to the information we'll get for the agenda item on January 17th.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the School Board Handbook. This is an action item, so I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of ISD 535 approve the School Board Handbook for 2023 and schedule an annual review of the handbook for December of 2023.
Move approval.
Second. Great, any discussion?
Awesome job.
Yes.
Yeah, I just note, for incoming school board members, the handbook is is very useful and helpful, so, thank you.
Great.
And also for those who have been here for a bit and didn't have any of that information.
I made a notice, I was skimming it, that I needed to go back and read some sections to get better knowledge.
Your bedtime reading, good, we aim to please. All right, so all those in favor of approving this, the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Did we read the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
So short, it just flew right by you. And we will be working with the Communications Department, as I've called it, to spiffy it up a little bit and make it available publicly on our website. The next agenda item is setting board meeting dates for 2023. So this is actually required annual action for the board, and it is also an action item, so let me read that resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of ISD 535 approve the dates, times, and locations for school board meetings for 2023, and be it further resolved that the School Board approves rescheduling of any school board meeting canceled because of weather to the day following the originally scheduled school board meeting date, Wednesday, and at the same time and place as the originally scheduled school board meeting. Move approval.
Second.
Great. So the reason we do this, before we go into a discussion, is by setting the dates, we don't, we don't have, we don't require any additional public notice for each meeting. We'll have the dates available on our website, through our social media. Outside our boardroom is our official school board bulletin board, where we post those kinds of public notices. So the only official change we would have to notify the public of is if we were to change the day or the time, but with the exception of inclement weather, which may or may not have come in handy this evening, depending on 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 how that worked.
So if tomorrow had also been a weather day, like, if today we had to cancel, move to tomorrow, tomorrow doesn't happen because also weather.
We would have to figure out a plan B.
Okay.
Right. I don't think it can happen in perpetuity. Director Barlow.
I'm just wondering, now that I reread this, if we could amend this, canceled because of weather or other emergency or something, because, you know, if the lightning hit the Edison Building.
That could be weather, though, couldn't it?
That is technically weather.
But, no, I understand what you're saying.
Catastrophic.
It could be a power outage or something that isn't related to weather. Is that, is that a motion to amend?
It is a motion to amend.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So the resolution will now include weather or other emergency.
Okay.
And then the schedule is also available in the lovely colored chart that our assistant school board clerk has put together. And this is also, mark your calendars, because this is when we will be seeing each other, between now and the end of December.
A lot.
A lot. There's a usual pattern of having a regular meeting, a study session, and then a regular meeting. It does not happen that way every month because of holidays, et cetera. We only have meetings in the latter half of July to accommodate what is usually a busy time of year for vacations, holidays, et cetera. So any other questions or comments before we take a vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Wonderful. All right, the next item is 10.03, Approval of Budget Adjustments as of October 31st, 2022, Superintendent Pecel. And this is also an action item, so I'll read the resolution. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the 2022-2023 budget adjustments through October 31st, 2022, in the following amounts. $10,089,929 of additional revenues for a grand total revenue budget of $353,205,685, and $37,203,001 of additional expenditures for a grand total expenditure budget of $425,355,556. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve 22.6 full-time equivalent FTEs of additional positions as summarized by the following amounts. 1.4 FTE less administrator positions, 2.0 FTE less cabinet positions, 1.2 FTE additional clerical positions, 12.5 FTE additional education support professional positions, 1.0 FTE additional non-schedule positions, 8.4 FTE additional off-schedule positions, 2.3 FTE less student nutrition services positions, and 5.2 FTE additional teacher positions. Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Superintendent Pecel.
I'd like to recognize our Chief Administrative Officer, John Carlson, to give a either overview or answer any other questions. I also want to take advantage, I'm not sure board members have had much chance yet, to meet Andy Krogstad, who's our Director of Finance. I'm not asking you to come up, but I want to thank Andy for bringing his considerable knowledge of finance from other sectors to education and doing amazing work with a big, steep learning curve, and it's great to have you onboard. And as this board knows, we are extremely fortunate at the caliber of financial leadership we have in the district. So, John.
Thank you for introducing Andy. Andy brings a lot of horsepower and additional help to our department. I've been really happy to have him here with us. So I'm not going to go through this word by word here, just want to give you a couple talking points. So budget adjustments, we do them two to three times a year, just depending on kind of the calendar and the flow and what needs to be approved. This one is rather a simple adjustment, although, as you read, the dollar amounts are not so simple, they are big dollar amounts, but they would account for additional grant. amounts. But they account for additional grants, additional donations, a different, additional revenue sources that we have identified since we prepared the original budget for your approval back last June, as well as then it accounts for incorporating rollover funds or carryover funds. Those are unspent funds from sites where they didn't fully spend their supply budget and construction funds, or they didn't fully finish the projects, but yet they continued into July, and now we need to reauthorize their expenditure in this budget. So as previously mentioned, we're adding $10 million of revenue to our budget, so it'd be $353 million. On the next slide, we're adding $37 million of expenditures. Again, nothing in here is because we are running short on funds, or we've added a whole bunch of new things that we can't afford. It's simply adding in new donations, new grants, carryover funds, and additional revenues that are supporting these expenditures. All total, again, as stated, the budget of $353 minus $425 would leave us a year-end fund balance and all of our funds that we hold district-wide of $128 million. The biggest one that we track the most closely, of course, is the general fund. Our fund balance at the end of the year, if you take fund balance divided by expenditures, would be about 15.8% if we fully expend the budget. And we'd have about 11% of that in the unassigned category. And just for refresher, the new school board policy, or updated school board policies to make sure we have at least 8% in the unassigned fund balance. So we are right on track where we want to be, and we are doing the things that we need to do. Obviously, that sounds very good, but we are still watching the, what is the impact of when our federal COVID funding is gone and it's being used to support many things that we have started or are trying to sustain. And once that funding runs out, we are facing kind of that fiscal cliff. And that's why we're going to be talking to you about the strategies around that pretty continuously here through the month of January and beyond. So be prepared for more there. As far as FTE, this chart just summarizes very quickly on the screen. The changes that are included within the budget revision, again, positions get added and subtracted almost on a daily basis when a need is identified. There might be a new IEP written that requires some additional support, so that might roll out an additional education support professional, might roll out a new special ed teacher. And then, of course, we've made strategic changes with cabinet, for example, in reducing the number of positions there. And so the budget accounts for that. All total, we are running about 1% under budget right now in our salaries and benefits. So if we project that to the end of the year, I don't know how my grading for learning score would be, but we'd be coming in at about 99% accurate. So hopefully that's in the A category in forecasting and budgeting. We are not asking for an increase. Typically, at this time of year, we do ask for additional increase for any of those new positions and for contract settlements. The positions that are funded by grants are actually in the budget, in the expenditure budget, but we're not asking for a large increase in salaries and benefits due to the contracts that were recently settled. And the biggest driver of that is we have 112.7 FTE of unfilled positions. I've stated this before, we're not actively trying to not fill positions. It's just the give and take and the churn and the daily grind of trying to fill the positions and not being able to quite get to 100% filled anymore. We will take a look at monitoring this and making sure that we're still kind of within that 98, 99 to 100% of budget. And if we feel that we are going to, if all of a sudden we start filling these positions that have been persisting with vacancies, we may come back and ask for a small budget revision to account for some of the salary increases we gave to our hourly workers over this last round of negotiations. So in summary, we're right on track. I think we're actually going to come in a little bit better than we planned. We had fully planned, as our roadmap has been for the last year, that we would draw down our fund balance of about $4.3 million this school year. It's looking more like 2.8 if we keep spending at the pace we're spending. And so we are going to be just a little bit better than planned by the end of the year is my hope, which is the way you want it. And I know that's, people can get concerned, like, oh, we're going to come in better, and we're saving all this money. But you definitely would not want it the other way. It would be very uncomfortable room to be in if I was coming to you and saying, we spent 103% of our budget. We actually went over the approved allocation. The auditors would be in here right away telling you how that is not good. So I feel, I feel very good that we're right on track at spending 99 to 100% of our budget based on our projections right now.
Board members? And John, how often can we affect these, expect these kinds of updates?
Yeah, so our normal cycle is that actually we do another budget revision around the end of January, and then we come to view with that in like early March. And then, of course, we'll be into bringing you the next school year's budget at the end of May. So you'll probably hear these updates probably two more times for this school year, if we have minor budget adjustments to make from here.
Great.
I was just going to say, in our monthly board pack, if you're looking for updates on how we're actually doing, usually there's a monthly budget to actual report. And there's some really nice graphical tools in there now that are kind of trying to forecast out and show you even on a one-sheeter about how it's going to play out for the rest of the year. So just keep your eye on that, too.
And we provide that in the consent agenda.
Yep. And if you ever need me, ever would like it, I would be happy to give update on those as long as it's one of the good ones.
Great. Hearing no questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Carlson. The next item on our agenda is 11.01, the ABCD, which was updated on December 19. This is the calendar that pushes us, our scheduling forward for the year. Does anybody have any items that they would like to have considered for addition to the ABCD? No? Great. The next two items on the agenda, 12.01, are the board questions and responses relative to the agenda items on this meeting. I think that will be posted on board docs soon. So you can see the questions that were asked by board members to cabinet and the superintendent on the items. The next agenda item is 12.02, Upcoming Board Meeting Dates. Based on what we've approved tonight, our next meeting is a study session at 5:00 PM on January 10, and then our regular meeting on January 17 at 5:30, a study session on January 24 at 5:00. And I believe many of those upcoming meetings will involve budget and financial forecast issues, if you're interested in that. We have a special session, which includes a public hearing on field trip fees on the 7th. That starts at 5:30. And then our regular meeting will immediately follow the conclusion of the special session. So given all those items, any other business? And this meeting is adjourned at 8:35.